Well, thanks for that. Did you?
What, you're muted, Matt? Still muted.
I think he's on a phone call.
No, I'm here now. Sorry, guys. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. So my clock is not on my computer. What does everybody have? Five yet or not?
Four fifty-nine.
Okay, wait one minute and then we'll start.
Okay, Randy, I have five o'clock.
All right, and Candy, you're all set. You're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, I will call the Oregon Village Board to order for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, and Candy, if you could, please take a roll call.
Bastin?
Here.
Beelow?
Here.
Balig?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Wunch?
Here.
And Stitch is currently on an excused leave.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we're on to number three, and our first thing is public appearances. And the first thing we have is three A, which is presentation of the twenty twenty financial statements with independent auditors report from Johnson Block and Company. And I think I saw Tara's name. I think she's part of Johnson Block. Is that who's gonna do it, Lisa?
That's correct.
Okay. So Tara, if you want to start, any time.
Okay. Certainly. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tara Bast with Johnson Block and Company. I'm the audit partner on the village's engagement with us. I've been working with the village for the last several years on their audit now. And I think I heard some of you chatting prior to the meeting starting that there's a lot of information there. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of disclosures. So the first thing here in your packet is actually a summary report that I'll plan to go over just to kind of hit some highlights, but I certainly welcome any additional questions. And I've talked to Lisa and Martin about jumping in because, you know, these are the village's financial statements, and they have a lot of the answers as well, but I will certainly answer any questions you have. And Lisa and Martin can chime in if they can add some additional context. But here, in the packet, you can see this twenty twenty audit overview. It gives you a brief rundown of the content of the audit report, which essentially goes through the table of contents of the report. So first and foremost, you have our independent auditors reporter or our audit opinion. This is where we're giving our opinion, our professional opinion on the financial statements. We intend to issue an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which means we feel the financial statements are fairly stated and free of any material misstatements. Then not listed here, but the next section of the report would be the management discussion and an analysis section. And that's just some additional narrative that's included that gives the village an opportunity to add some more detail and additional supporting narrative that helps support the financial statements. Next, there's a couple sets of financial statements. First, you have government-wide financial statements. And those are more considered a consolidated set of financial statements. It consolidates all of your governmental funds into one column of governmental activities, and it also consolidates your proprietary or utility funds into one set of one column of financial data. So again, consolidating statements that take the information of all the village funds and report them in either governmental or proprietary. And those statements are also on the what's considered the full accrual basis of accounting. So different than the day-to-day financial statement books of the village's governmental funds, the full accrual statements report assets and liabilities based on long-term in nature. So your capital assets are recorded as assets on the balance sheet, net of depreciation. Long-term debt obligations are recorded as a long-term liability on the balance sheet and reduced over time. The next set of financial statements are your fund financial statements, and those contain individual balancing funds. So our balance sheet and income statement for each individual fund that the village has. Again, those are broken down into a couple different types of funds. You have your governmental funds, which the main operating fund is your general fund. And then there's also some larger funds that are reported as major funds, your debt service, street improvements, TIF District Number Three, and your library fund. And then the rest of the funds that are smaller in nature are combined and reported in detail in the supplemental information, but they're considered non-major funds. Next, you have your business-type funds. So there's a set of financial statements for both the water and sewer utility. And those are also on the full accrual basis of accounting, so more that long-term look of assets and liabilities and then operating statements and a statement of cash flows as well. And again, as I mentioned, the major differences between those sets of statements primarily relate to debt and long-term capital assets. Those are really two of the differences between the full accrual and modified accrual financial statements. Then probably the largest section of the audit report is the notes to the financial statements. The first section contains the summary of significant accounting policies. Those are all pretty standard financial accounting policies for governmental entities. Nothing really unique there that the village follows other than the normal standards. And then you have sets of financial statement footnotes that again just help support and provide additional detail and go along and support the financial statements themselves. Major footnote disclosure areas, cash, capital assets, debt, fund balance, just provide some additional detail of what's condensed in the financial statements themselves. After that, you've got the required supplementary information and other supplementary information. The RSI includes budget-to-actual comparison schedules for any of the major funds or the general fund and any major special revenue funds. So budgets are presented for the general fund, library, and TIF III. And then additionally, since the village participates in the Wisconsin retirement system as well as the state life insurance plan, there's some additional required supplementary schedules related to participation in those plans. And then the supplementary information, again, is those combining statements for all the other smaller, non-major funds that the village maintains. So at the bottom here, other reports, we'd just like to provide some additional information on some of the other compilation reports that we assist the village in compiling and filing with regulatory agencies. Those include the Water Utility Public Service Commission annual report. The village's water utility is regulated by the PSC, and they require an annual financial and statistical data report be filed every year with them. So that was filed this year in June. Then you have the Department of Revenue Municipal Financial Report that's submitted to the Department of Revenue by May fifteenth of every year. They use that to assist in calculating municipal state aids and transportation aids, and that encompasses all the funds of the village. On to the next page. Just a brief overview, in addition to issuing the audit, the financial statements and required disclosures, we also issue a required audit communication packet. A couple different letters included in there that are issued with almost every one of our governmental reports. You have the audit matters requiring communication to the governing body. That is a standard communication letter. I wouldn't say there's anything specific or unusual in that letter that we issued. That's something that gets issued with every or required to issue and communicate at the end of every audit. Then we have our internal control communication letter. This is where we would point out any internal control deficiencies that we might see. And really, the only thing that we reported this year was the reliance on us to assist in preparing the financial statements and then providing audit adjustments that are included in the financial statements. So mainly closing entries that are common, that entries aren't made throughout the year because they're more year-end financial accounting and reporting journal entries or closing entries. So again, not uncommon for most of our clients to have us have that internal control communication and rely on us for some of those year-end adjustments. Then additionally, we issue a management letter comment where we just provide anything we see or any recommendations to management on different internal policies or procedures. The two comments I have there, internal accounting controls, just an ongoing recommendation to take a look at the internal policies and procedures that the village has. You know, as staff turns over over the years, as you've, you know, maybe transitioned to more remote procedures, and some people may still be working remote, it's a really good time to take a look at what your written documentation is for how you process transactions and what your policies are so that individuals that come in that are maybe new to the organization can go to those documents and say, okay, this is how processes are followed. And then the other comment, future accounting standard, that's just informational. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board has come out with a new standard on leases that was delayed due to COVID. So we've got until twenty twenty-two for that implementation. But because it is somewhat of a complicated standard, we just like to communicate that ahead of time so we start compiling the information we need. And then lastly, in the summary page, key financial indicators, which I'll touch on more in detail in the following pages, but just some of the key financial indicators we'll look at is the village's available fund balance, budget-to-actual comparisons and favorable changes there, your tax base, long-term debt in relation to the tax base. The village has good operating income and cash flow results in the utilities, and then utility cash flow and operating results in comparison to potential future capital needs. So if you scroll down to the next page, as I mentioned, the village's main operating fund is the general fund. So we like to do a two-year comparison for you and kind of go through the main operating fund or the results of the general fund. You'll see the top here is a condensed balance sheet for the general fund comparing two thousand twenty to two thousand nineteen. Cash and taxes receivable being the two largest areas of assets. And I did break out there cash, your operating cash versus cash that's considered advanced tax collections. At the end of every year, the village becomes the tax collection agency for the tax rule for all of the overlying taxing jurisdictions. So there is a portion of cash that is collected at the end of the year that is actually for next year's operating budget. So cash gets inflated even though it's for next year's operations. And taxes receivable, again, related to that, is the tax rule levied in two thousand twenty that will be for the two thousand twenty-one operating budget. Then you have your liabilities, deferred inflows and fund balance. Current liabilities are, at the end of the year, were similar to the previous year, just over four hundred thousand. And then deferred inflows, that again is related to the tax levy, the two thousand twenty tax levy levied and would be for two thousand twenty-one operations. And then what's left over, assets minus liabilities, is the village's general fund balance. And you'll see there in the middle of the page the detail or the breakdown of the fund balance between the four different categories that the village reports, non-spendable, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Notable change between the non-spendable between the two years, which is directly related to the general fund transferring funds to, oh, Lisa, help me out here, what was the stormwater fund?
It was for the homes that were purchased on Florida Avenue.
Yep, so there had been a fund in the village's books for several years that was carrying a deficit balance. So last year, the board decided to have the general fund transfer funds to write off that interfund. So there's kind of a direct correlation between the reduction in that non-spendable fund balance and the decrease there related to that transfer in that fund. Assigned fund balance increased some from the previous year. Those were budget department carryovers that the village approved for two thousand twenty. And then really, what's left over is your unassigned fund balance. So in terms of health of the general fund, we really look at total fund balance, but also unassigned fund balance. So you'll see those percentage calculations there where we take a look at, you know, what's the percentage of unassigned fund balance compared to your operating budget? So you're around thirty-five percent of unassigned fund balance compared to next year's operating budget or two thousand twenty-one's operating budget, and total fund balance is thirty-nine percent. So a very healthy fund balance percentage in relation to your operating budget. You know, anywhere between fifteen and thirty percent is where we recommend, depending on a municipality's cash flow needs. So you're above that benchmark and within a healthy fund balance. Then the bottom of this page here, a summarized income statement for the general fund comparing your budget to actual results. So the original budget had included a planned decrease in fund balance of four hundred and eleven thousand, or that was the final budgeted amount. Actual results resulted in an increase of just over eighty-six thousand dollars in fund balance for the end of the year. Significant budget areas that showed expenditures much less than the budget were in your general fund and your public safety budget lines. This next page here just gives an even further breakdown of the general fund fund balance comparing between the two years. So again, as I mentioned, that non-spendable fund balance decrease mainly related to advances receivable, a small amount of committed fund balance comparable or equal to the prior year. Some of those assigned fund balance categories, most of it being those budget carryovers, and then what's left is your unassigned fund balance. Now, the next page provides a two-year comparison of the remaining funds of the village broken down by the different types of funds. So here, you see the comparison between the special revenue funds at the end of two thousand twenty compared to two thousand nineteen. Library fund had a significant increase in fund balance primarily due to the donations received for the future capital campaign, the new library building. That's probably one of the more significant jumps in the fund balance activity. And then you also have your capital projects funds, your other capital projects funds, the larger funds being your street improvements fund. You've got the playing field redevelopment, which funds have been borrowed for for future projects, some of the larger fund balance categories, and your equipment replacement fund is also included in there. Debt service fund, that's just what it is. Every year, the village levies to levy taxes to help pay for debt service, as well as the TIF districts have TIF increments that cover some of the debt service in the TIFs. So that fund is used to report principal and interest payments due annually. And then the village has a couple permanent funds, the cemetery and the Whackman Trust Fund. Any questions so far before I jump into anything else?
Jerry, you're unmuted, sir.
Thank you, Randy. I have a question.
Yeah?
And actually, my questions have to do with the the twenty twenty financial statement highlights. Is this a good time to ask those, or do you want me to wait?
You can certainly ask now if you'd like.
Okay, all right. Actually, you already answered my first question about the non-spendable fund balance with the Florida Avenue stuff. And the non-spendable fund balance for delinquent tax amounts, what is that?
So that would be taxes or fees put on the tax levy for either delinquent charges. Sometimes, you know, you'll do snow plowing that you'll charge, and they won't pay by the time the tax rule is done. Or there's also the delinquent utility bills that are put on the tax rule. So the county does not settle in full with Dane County. It's a county-by-county practice, but Dane County does not settle in full on delinquent charges put on the tax rule. So it's really a receivable that's out there that, once the county gets payment on those delinquent charges, then they will remit the payment to the village.
Okay. The next question is about the assigned fund balance for budget carryovers. Why is there such a big jump from twenty nineteen?
Lisa, I don't know if you want to chime in. I think that was something new that you guys approved for twenty twenty.
Yeah, that was part of our budget process for the twenty twenty-one budget. There were a number of one-time expenditures that we levied for in in twenty twenty that we didn't get to, like hiring the new administrator. All those expenses actually ended up being in twenty twenty-one. We thought we were going to start more back in twenty twenty. So instead of levying for that expense, again, we carried those funds forward because they were one-time expense. So that was one of the items. There is a whole list of them that we carried the money for through. There was the Lerner Park Master Planning. That was another item where we levied for in twenty twenty, and we did not get to that. So we brought those funds forward to spend in twenty twenty-one. So that's why you see the significant increase there. A lot of it probably had to do with COVID and just not doing projects. And it didn't make sense for us as we went through the budget process last year to levy for items that we had already levied for one-time expenses.
Thank you.
You have more?
I do.
Okay.
Does it cost anymore to ask more questions?
No, no, just a dollar.
All right. Just keep running that tab, Randy. All right. My next question is in the audit matters requiring communication to the governing body. My first question is about depreciation. Of course, the village does not file a tax return or pay an income tax. Why are we concerned with depreciation?
In terms of why it's recorded, or, I mean, it's following governmental accounting standards to report and record depreciation based on the type of fund and then also based on which set of financial statements we're recording it in on the full accrual statements. So it's giving you two different perspectives. Whereas on your day-to-day operations and books, you expense capital items through the income statement for your governmental funds. So it's a short-term cash outflow and an expense for an asset that you're using over a number of years. So depreciating it records the asset on the balance sheet and then allows you to, kind of, it allows you to estimate the cost over the number of estimated useful years. So you buy a new police squad car, you know, based on the historical length of time that the village has, you know, keeps a squad car. That cost is allocated over that estimated number of years on a straight-line basis. So that's just requirements under the governmental accounting standards to be able to issue a clean audit opinion and report that in that manner.
So Tara, basically, just, does that give an indication of how much life is left in that asset? Is that? Is there a practical use for that?
It can. I mean, it's certainly different from, let's say, your insured list of assets. I mean, your insurance company, you provide a list of assets, but they're more concerned with the replacement costs as opposed to the historical cost. But under governmental accounting standards, the assets are recorded at historical cost and then allocated over the estimated useful life. You know, whether that estimated useful life is something that is completely accurate, it may not be. Sometimes you end up running out a public works truck, you know, for a long time. Or you may have assets that, you know, industry standard says, you know, this type of asset is a twenty-year average life. You know, certain vehicles are a seven-to-ten-year average life. So it's really an estimate, which is why it's disclosed in here as a significant estimate because you may use those assets for less years, you may use them for more years, but it's kind of finding, on average, what those estimated useful lives are by the type of asset. So Lisa's got a big, extensive set of spreadsheets that tracks that information and then assigns a useful life based on what's been assigned in the past for similar assets.
Thank you. If we move to page nine, under additional comments. First paragraph, last sentence, we did note at times there is overlap within the controls over journal entries and cash receipts. To the extent possible, these should be segregated or have additional compensating controls implemented. And my question is, have those controls been implemented? Or will they be implemented?
I don't know that that's a question I can answer.
Jerry, what paragraph was that again?
That's on page nine, the first paragraph, last sentence.
I think that has to do with the size of our staff where there's like a matrix that I fill out every year for the auditors that gives them a list of the employees and what their primary, if they're like a primary on cash receipting, and then if somebody else is reviewing journal entries and things like that. And I think usually it says in here somewhere later that, based on the size of our of our staff, that there's no way to segregate everything. I mean, as far as I know, we're doing it to the best of our ability with the staff that we have. I don't, I mean, we try to separate as much as we can so that the same person's not doing one task from beginning to end. They do part of it, and then somebody else may do part of it.
Yeah, and I would say from, you know, this is something that with internal control auditing standards that we are, it's just something we have to assess every year. But I will say, the village does have a really good, you know, significant segregations or separations of duties, given the size. I mean, you do have a larger office staff than other municipalities I work with. You are able to separate those functions more than most of my clients. It's just one of those things where maybe not every single transaction is able to, type of transaction is able to have that overlap or that separation. So it's just our duty to communicate that, even though, you know, it might not be reasonable or feasible to get that complete separation of duties. But more just so that, you know, you as the board and the oversight But more just so that, you know, you as the board and the oversight of the village are aware that there are, you know, there could be risks, but, you know, with my experience, you do have a good-sized office staff and have good separations of, of transaction classes and duties.
Okay, so you, you, you agree with Lisa's explanation then?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, I know one of the, the things I say there is, you know, journal entries because Lisa is the one charged with doing most of the journal entries. So it's really just keeping open communication between staff so that those that are in the books understand those journal entries and why they're done and, and to have good backup documentation, which she does, so.
Okay. And then moving on to the concluding remarks here, I just like to read the last sentence of the second paragraph. And that is as follows, "The village's staff is deeply committed to maintain the financial reporting system so that informed decisions can be made. They're receptive to our comments and suggestions." So I just like to compliment the staff on that. And those are, you're welcome. Those are my questions at this time.
Okay. Yeah, no, certainly. Those are great questions and, you know, I would say from an audit process, you know, we've kind of had to switch gears the last year and a half and do things a little more remote. And, you know, your staff is always willing to appease our, you know, 100 requests a day when we are asking for information, especially during the remote audit process, when we have to have things digitally, it's extra work for them and they got us everything we needed and you know, we appreciate the time they put into helping us get everything complete too, so.
All right. Thank you, Jerry.
So I can, the rest of the summary report, I'll go over pretty quickly because some of it's just some historical data that gives you just kind of some trend analysis over the last several years. Once we get back to that, I can hit on some of those highlights.
Where you want to go, or you want to go back to the?
Back to the, the pretty charts and graphs, yeah.
Okay, good.
Page, page six.
Ben, sorry. You might glasses on.
That's fine.
There we go.
There you go. So again, the next several pages are just some historical information. So this is a, a chart that shows you the property tax levy for the village tax levy as well as each of the tax incremental districts, the TIF districts, and what their increment, that's part of the levy is over the last five years. You know, your village tax levy has increased, but that's pretty much attributable to, you know, your, your growth. There's, you're in a significant growth area and had significant growth over the last couple of years, so it would, it would be expected that your tax levy would increase as well. And then this is similar information, the 2020 tax levy that's for the 2021 operating budget. Just taking a look at the components that make up that tax levy. So again, as I mentioned, the, the village ends up being the collection agency for the tax levy at the end of the year. There's portions, you know, the biggest portion of tax levies are usually the local school district. And then you have the county portion, technical colleges that are in your jurisdiction. There, the, the village levy, which is approximately 25.66% of the total property tax roll. And then each of the individual tax, TIF incremental districts that have small portions of tax levy. Here on this page, it's a look at your general obligation debt versus your allowable capacity to borrow. Under state statutes, the village can borrow up to 5% of the equalized value within the village. So your actual capacity to borrow would be the 65.6 million. Your outstanding general obligation debt at the end of the year is the 22 point, almost 22.4 million. Now, obviously, the more you borrow, the more that's needed to potentially be covered by tax, tax levy. So I think the village has done its best in trying to keep that debt. You know, it's pretty much a straight line there and probably it trends with the growth in the tax base, so keeping that in mind. The next page, here's a look at your water and sewer operating results, so, results. So this, I think, is helpful when you start to look at what your water, you, water and sewer utility infrastructure needs may be in the future and how the utilities' results have been over the last several years. So it gives you kind of two perspectives here. The top there is utility operations. So really, an income statement. And then the second set is utility cash flows, which again is another good measure of how a utility is doing. So water and sewer utility, utility operations. The water utility had a net income of just over 111,000 for 2020. Now that includes your operating revenues, charges to customers, less operating expenses, which does include a depreciation piece, so a non-cash expenditure. And then the tax equivalent, which is a regulatory, regulatory charge that is paid to the general fund annually. And then same with the sewer utility. You have your operating revenues and operating expenses, which again includes that depreciation expense piece. So while the sewer utility did have a, an operating loss of just under $80,000 for the year, but comparable to previous years, again, a large portion of the operating expenses is depreciation. So that's why you'll see a big difference down below in the second set of data on the utility cash flows. You know, while the income statement can show a net income or loss, your cash flows can show an increase in cash because of that non-cash expense that's reported. So the water utility had a net increase in operating cash of 629,000 for 2020. And the sewer utility had a net increase in operating cash of just under 312,000 for 2020. And then that last section here, just taking a look, I know this is a ratio the PSC sometimes looks at and regulatory agencies and bonding agencies will look at, is what your utility cash, unrestricted cash reserves are compared to your operating expenses. So as I, I mentioned, you know, both your water, you, water and sewer utility have had a healthy cash flow. You have very healthy cash reserves for future operations and needs. But again, kind of comparing that to what future potential capital project needs are because, as I'm sure you're aware, water and sewer utility capital projects can eat up, eat up those reserves quite quickly. So just keeping that in mind, but a healthy, healthy cash reserves nonetheless. And again, this is the same financial data, just giving you a look at the operating income or loss over the last five years for the water and sewer utility. And then the next few pages, this is general fund expenditure data. Taking a look at the five-year trend of general fund expenditures, including debt service over the last five years, your largest expenditure being public safety. That's pretty common. We'll see public safety or public works being the largest expenditure for most municipalities. Your village is a little unique, well, not a little. The, I see other villages or municipalities do that, but one of the, the drivers in some public works expenditures is your garbage and recycling fees, which you have a separate fund for. So that's why your public works expenditures may not be as, as large of an expenditure category in the general fund as maybe compared to some other communities, but that's not uncommon to have it in a separate fund as well. And the next page is just a two-year comparison, again, of the general fund expenditures broken down by the functional categories, general government, public safety, public works, your health and human services, culture, recreation and education, conservation and development, and then debt service. It's pretty comparable between the two years. And again, the next two pages, similar charts and graphs, but for your general fund revenues. So again, like most municipalities, your largest revenue source is your taxes, your tax roll and tax levy, followed by intergovernmental revenues, which would be your state shared revenues and really the largest portion, your transportation aids. And then the next page is again, that pie chart for the two-year comparison of the general fund revenues between the two years. And I believe that is the end of the summary report. So that was everything I had intended to go over in detail, but again, if there are any other questions or if Lisa or Martin wanted to throw anything else in there or, or provide any context, anything.
Any other questions from board members, or Tara?
Yeah. Let me take this somewhere where I can talk in quiet. I'm going nuts. One of the things that struck me out of all this, if you go to page 14, which is the debt chart, was I was kind of floored by how much debt we actually have taken on over the last five years. I mean, it's to the two and a four, you don't see the 2020 numbers here and not including what we just did in 2021. It was $14 million. And knowing that we've got an additional, I guess, 12 million or 8 million, because I think 4 million of what we, our bond issue this year was targeted to repayment of, of, or reissuing of bonds, I'm not sure, retiring of some debt. What struck me is we've got probably eight and a half million at least committed for next year of new borrowing for the library. We've got the senior citizen center immediately after that, which will probably be several million dollars. And, you know, mid 2020s into 2030, we've got, you know, it comes from the enterprise fund for the sewer, but we've probably got $25 million of projects there. We have currently about 20% of our, of our tax revenue is, is going to paid debt service. And I'm a little concerned what this is going to look like going into the future. And I went down and talked to Lisa and Jeff pretty extensively this morning about it because it was eye-opening for me. I didn't, I didn't realize that that was where we were sitting debt-wise with the village. Just a comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? Martin or Lisa, do you want to say anything?
I guess I don't really have anything else to add unless somebody has another question about anything in the audit.
Okay.
Lisa, do you have any response from trustee Luntz's comments about debt?
Debt is a I'm, you know, since I've been here, you know, we've always been at 30% of our capacity, which has kept our mill rate down. But with all the heavy borrowing that we're doing, the 10 million for the library and other building projects, you know, it, it's going to double and it is going to affect people a lot. So I just hope that everybody's aware of when it comes tax bill time that this year won't be quite as bad yet because what we borrowed this year actually, the debt service won't hit until next year. Well, actually, when we start working on our budget for 2022, we're going to start to feel the effects of having to do these large borrowings for these major projects that we have going on. And it is going to double our debt capacity from about 30 to 60%. And I just hope that we have continue our growth pattern of 5 to 6% in assessed value because that does help spread the spread the debt service over more value. So if we continue to grow, it won't be as bad, but if we come to a halt in new residential or businesses or large projects that like what we have going on are going to be exceptionally helpful in the future, but we need to have more to continue to offset some of our debt that we do have coming up.
So can I just further that a little bit more, Lisa?
Sure.
So basically, if I understand what you're saying is property taxes are going to go up. And if businesses, business growth and residential growth doesn't go up proportionately, property taxes will go up dramatically. Is that, did I capture that correctly?
That's a pretty good summary here. So we have, we have to continue our growth to pay for what we have going on in the village.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, I'll just say, thank you for bringing it up because it always, for me, it's always, it, it has been in the back of my mind, you know, we have these projects that, these great projects that we need to do, but we, we can't lose sight of the, of the debt things. And we've talked about this before and I think it's something that we sort of need to continue to, to, to make sure that we don't get ourselves in in trouble and, and try to keep the, the taxes down because that's always the number one thing we, we hear a lot about from the community. But it is something that we have to continually remind ourselves and keep that on the radar.
Well, Randy, it was evident to me from my discussions with, with Lisa and Jeff today that, that people, our staff is well-aware of this. But certainly as a new trustee coming on board, it was eye-opening for me to, I mean, I never thought I would ever say that I found an audit report to, that I read to be gripping, but I kind of did. Over the weekend.
I'll take it as a compliment. I read through the whole thing.
A real page turner. But it was really eye-opening for me, you know, where we sit financially.
Yeah.
Randy, Carleen, Carleen has raised her hand.
All right, yeah, Carleen, go ahead.
I, I think Amanda was ahead of me. She just didn't raise her hand too soon.
Yeah, thank you. I was trying, that's okay.
I didn't see your hand, Amanda, sorry.
No, it's okay, no problem. So a couple of things on the, the debt. I know that it, it feels very alarming to see it all spelled out that way. But a couple of things, even during the pandemic, our growth rate has continued to climb. I mean, and, and, and although that past performance is not a predictor of future performance, we don't have any concrete reasons to think that the, the growth wouldn't continue at least for a while longer at this rate. That's the first thing. The second thing is, if we're going to borrow for big projects, now is the time to do it. The interest rates are incredibly low, which is, which saves our village a lot of money. So yes, that it's a lot of debt that we're taking on, but we're doing it at the best possible time while our growth rates are high. So I, I think if we're going to do it, I think we're still in a pretty good financial position to be doing it. So I try to keep all of that in mind, big picture. That was it.
Okay, all right, yeah, Carleen.
The only thing I was going to add is that the projects that we're taking on are, are looking toward that growth and, and supporting that growth. And I think that that's an important thing to remember, that we're building the library because it needs to grow because we're growing, the senior center, et cetera, all the things that, that we're taking on as these projects. And I, I like you, Mike, was like, holy Christ, that's a lot of money. But, you know, when you think of it in terms like what Amanda said and just the overall growth of the community, I think that, that it, it feels to me like we're in good shape.
But just so you're aware that this is only through 2020 and we borrowed, you know, $12 million in '21, so add 12 million to '22. That's where we're sitting.
Was part of the borrowing we saw of the 12 million, that looked like it was to refund some other debt or pay off some other debt. Is that true or not?
That, that is true. We did a short-term borrowing with the bank to buy the bank building where Village Hall is moving into. So that's what the majority of that borrowing was for. So we hadn't made any payments on that. And that number is not included in this 2020 number.
Okay. Okay, so we didn't really pay off old bonds or something like that?
No, no, we did not.
All right.
Okay, anybody else?
Ballack has one further comment on this subject. I just want to point out too that our inventory of buildable residential and business lots is becoming very limited. And that's what we rely on to fuel this growth. So if I I think it's going to be important in the future that we are able to expand east of Highway 14 and that we're able to expand into another business park location in order to, you know, fuel this growth and pay for our debt.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. All right, anybody else? Are we ready for a there is a staff recommendation and it's a motion to accept the audit report as presented to us tonight.
Ballack will make that motion.
Okay.
I'm sure I did.
All right, Mike, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, very good. Tara, thank you for doing a nice job and explain the 66 pages that we had in front of us.
Right, I know. It gets longer every year.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Tara, you could be a novelist.
It's gripping, I know. Well, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good bedtime reading.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on to three B, which is a conceptual review of a proposed annexation of 5207 Lincoln Road in the town of Oregon submitted by Roger Parsons and Jeff Mason. So why don't we have a little bit of background and there we do have a staff recommendation that I'll read after we sort of have a little background. And so I think probably Jeff is going to is pinching for Elise and
I think Elise is, Elise, you're on.
Well, she's here, that's right.
She's here, so she's gonna, she did the report on this.
Take it lightly.
All right, thanks, Randy.
Yeah.
Believe we brought this before the board back in the April and the planning commissioner as well. So this might sound familiar, but there's a piece of land near the water tower over on Lincoln Road owned by Roger Parsons. A gentleman named Jeff Mason is interested in building a sort of rural type home with a garage and space for a horse. And has been looking in the area for quite a while to try to find a piece of property where he'd be able to build that house and outbuildings. And I've reached out to Roger Parsons and who has this land near the water tower and we've been working with them just conceptual level over the last couple of months to understand how much land would be, you know, sort of divided and the sort of moral story here is that Roger Parsons is out of his, this is in the town of Oregon. He's out of his allowable splits in terms of selling any land off that would not be for agricultural use. So any additional splits of his property would be the only way he could really do that, if it was not going to be used for ag use, would be to annex that land into the village and then it would be subject to our zoning code and site interview, all those types of things. So what you see here is lots two and three are, well, actually, all these properties are owned by Roger Parsons, but lot one is going to be purchased by somebody and remain in ag use in the town. A neighbor adjacent there. So that's not really part of the conversation tonight, but lot two is where the farm is right now. It's run by Mr. Parsons and lot three, that area, 12 acres there is what Jeff Mason has has expressed interest in purchasing. I know he has plans, you know, if he would be able to develop this would be to build this house and sort of all of the related outbuildings and things on the southern end of that parcel. So it'd be facing south and and really not be too visible or fronting Lincoln Road in a big way. You can see the water tower just up there off the top right hand corner. So we've been talking about this with our attorney and surveyors and other folks for a couple of weeks, months here, and just understanding what the process would be in terms of recording the certified survey map, dividing up the land, bringing it into the village. On one hand, an opportunity to bring land into the village is something we should always consider. It's provides the village an opportunity to control future development and, you know, adds some tax revenue and helps us build sort of our land, especially this area is shown as planned neighborhood on our comprehensive plan. So that's not necessarily these small lot for these large lot rural type houses, but more single family neighborhoods. You know, different residential types of housing within these neighborhoods. So that's kind of what's envisioned on this end of the village for the future. So the sort of question before us tonight and nothing's, you know, this is just a conceptual discussion, but wanted to get the village boards take on the situation and provide some more feedback to Mr. Parsons and Mr. Mason before they proceed any further with their request, but sort of the choice before the board is, you know, do we want to pursue, you know, their annexation request or not? The reason that, you know, again, Mr. Parsons is out of his splits is because Dane County and the town of Oregon, which operates with under Dane County zoning, they have farmland preservation practices in place for this very reason, to make sure that land doesn't continue to get divided and carved up into all these little formats and rural homes, but that there's farmlands and then there's sort of the denser residential development that's more concentrated in the cities and villages. So if we were to accept this annexation, we're sort of going against a little bit of what the town and the county have been working to uphold over the last couple of decades. We would also be adding another rural residential property owner who, you know, maybe at this time he's not you know, there's no foreseeable development around him, but maybe in the future there is a neighborhood or something like that that's looking to come in and as we have more of these little carved out pieces of properties, more folks living along the you know, like a road corridor, it just makes future development a little bit more complicated. There's also just the idea of setting a precedent so that you know, is that something that we want to do and sort of make that statement for other property owners within the town that once they use up all of their allowable splits of the land, they could just continue to split, bring land into the village, make kind of create a bit of a piecemeal approach to the village boundary and again, setting precedent. So if we do this for Mr. Mason, will other people expect that that would be done as well? So I think I kind of summarized the pros and cons. It looks it out there in the memo. I know Randy, Martin and Jeff had a conversation with the town chair last week and so they can maybe speak a little bit more about Mr. Ace's opinion on the matter. But at this time, the staff is recommending that we do not proceed with the annexation request, just keeping in mind the larger picture, wanting to maintain a good working relationship with the town and the county and that while, of course, Mr. Parsons wants to, you know, make some money and sell his property and Mr. Mason is eager to find a home site for his home that's planned. But it doesn't really necessarily gain the village anything here and that perhaps keeping the larger longer picture in mind would be more prudent for the village. So happy to have the guys that were part of the town conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then answer any questions. I know.
Jeffrey Martin, do you want to say something about that meeting with with Wayne?
Sure, Martin, you're right. Doesn't matter. Yeah, I mean, it was, we we have meetings typically with the town to discuss these type of issues as well as other things that are going on in the town and in the border areas. I think everyone in that meeting was kind of in the same mindset as far as as Elise has lined out some of the pros and cons. As a chair of the town, Wayne was not in supportive of this either. I think we all kind of feel like it's anytime where you're trying to say circumvent one thing by going around and doing another. Quite honestly, just doesn't feel right. And there are reasons that these split restrictions at the town level are there to kind of prevent this type of thing from happening. I think we always look at everything and say, what is the long term benefit for the village? And does this benefit, you know, long term? I mean, present time, it doesn't look like it would impact us much, but long term we try to look with our our crystal ball and try to see what's going to happen in the future. And I mean, our staff recommendation, which was agreement, which the town was in agreement with, was that this was not a a good thing for the village at this time.
Okay. So I I see Mr. Mason is on the call. Jeff, do you want to, you want to say something about this?
Yes, please. Um, I'll add tiny bit of background, trying not to take up too much people's time. I have lived in the village for the past 10 years in a rental home. It's been my dream for as long as I can remember to design and build my own home on a larger piece of land. I have spent the last two years nonstop looking for land. I have, this is the third time I have put an offer to purchase on a piece of land. First time in the town of Dunn, the second time in the town of Springdale. Both times I've been shut down on large pieces of land because precedence and quite honest, I've just heard, I've heard it over and over again, precedence, we can't have any change. I have driven hundreds of miles. I have sent over 250 letters to everybody that I can find, literally just going off county GIS, begging people to buy a piece of land. I have not been able, this is the first piece of land in quite a while that anybody has even talked to me about. We just got done hearing the audit report and we're, the the last thing that was just said was, hey, we need more people paying taxes. Well, I've always paid my taxes. I have no criminal record or anything like that. Mr. Parsons has been, as far as I know, a good, a good member of the community for a long time. I'm very cognizant of the fact that this is across the street from the Bergamont Golf Course. The home I have is envisioned is farther south down on there and should not involve the view shed too much. I'm quite shocked because, you know, like I I met at the previous meeting about a month ago or so and and I've had countless phone calls with with Elise and and other people. And up until the end of last week, everything seemed to be going pretty well. I am willing to do anything or everything to to try to make this happen because quite frankly, I don't have, there is no second option. There is no second option and I I I'm at your mercy and and I don't know what else to say other than, yeah, we can precedent this and say, well, it sets a bad precedence or how does this help us? I just want to build a house. I don't want to build a strip club or a nuclear power plant or an airport or anything like that. I just want to build a home on a decent sized piece of land. I don't know if this has any bearing on this at all. And I do want to keep it very agricultural. I do have my agreement with with Mr. Parsons is that I would be buying these 12 acres currently and I have a basically be a land contract to eventually purchase the rest of the land there once he as he gets older and wants to retire and perhaps leave the leave the property. So I am trying to expand this piece just currently right now financially. This is what I can afford. I really don't know what else to say. I'm 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 in shock. I'm in awe and I'm just really emotional about this because, yeah, nothing else to say.
So so, Mr. Mason, let me ask you a question. There's, I mean, I, and maybe you've looked at it right next is is a is a 13 acre parcel with a house that is for sale. Did you look at that at all?
You talking about the 1.8 million?
Well, yeah, I I know it's that high, but I mean, it's 13 acres. It's got a house. Have you even? Did you look at it or anything or consider that? I mean?
Sir, I don't, I don't have 1.8 million dollars.
Okay, I just want to want to ask because I know it was right next door.
And again, my my dream has been to design and build a home, not 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 to buy anything.
Okay. All right, yeah, Carleen, got a question.
Yeah, so I just wanted, from personal experience, I have lived on two CSMs in the town of Montrose and the town of Oregon and I know how town boards feel and towns feel about being being annexed. Lot of resistance to that for a good reason for to be annexed. But and and when I lived in Montrose Township, we had to apply for a waiver. And I wonder if you have have done that. Have you? So this is a question for you. Have you applied for a waiver with the town to ask them to grant you the waiver to for splits? That that's what we did when we lived in Montrose and both the county and the the town granted it.
So no, the answer is no. However, the reason this this came about, I developed a number of contacts, again, through my previous exploits of trying to build a home in primarily in the town of Dunn. I became quite familiar with a number of the people at Dane County zoning, including Brian Standing. And Brian Standing at the County of Dane zoning, when I originally found this piece of land, I reached out to him and said, hey, Brian, what do you know about this parcel number? And he said to me, he said, don't even try this from a town point of view, just go, he said, annexation is the way to go. And that's how this conversation started. I did want to add one thing here, just to just to bring this up, and that is that I, again, have been sort of scrambling since last week. I spoke with Brian Duffin, the, I guess, head of planning for the town of Oregon roughly two hours ago. And Mr. Duffin said that he had, and he gave, he explicitly gave me permission. He said, I don't speak for the board, but that he said, I, in in support of this and would not oppose this at all, and you have given my permission to let the village board know that the the town of Oregon planning would would be in support of of this of this annexation, have and not necessarily in support. He's like, we have no, we have no dog in this fight and we're not, we're not looking to oppose it in any capacity. I realize that's not the board. Totally understand the difference.
Okay, so Elise, can you do one thing for us? I mean, can can you just sort of just reiterate what why this would not, this is why this is not a good idea?
So sort of the process that has been proposed by Mr. Mason and the surveyor that they're working with is that, you know, this land will be divided up sort of as as drawn as you see in front of you. And lot one, again, would say is agricultural. And we can't create any town islands, that piece of property that's sort of in the middle is the one that you referenced, Randy, that's for sale. So we can't isolate that parcel. So therefore, lot one has to kind of remain that geographical connection to the town or the home that's for sale right now. But we've been sort of after the lot would be split, immediately turn around and annex this property into the village, if that's the direction that the board wants to go. It it is, as Jeff kind of mentioned, you know, it does kind of circumvent the longstanding policy that the the county has upheld and has in place of about these number of splits. As you can see, there's already a number of different homes that are, you know, sort of carved out of the original block of, you know, 40 acres here and there that was probably part of the original farmland, I think.
At least I can comment a little bit.
Yeah.
As far as one of the things, if you look at, you know, if you start looking at our areas of growth as a village, we can grow to the north, a little bit north of Netherwood Road. We can grow south of Lincoln Road. Those are, if you look in our comprehensive plan and other, those are our growth areas. And like Jerry was mentioning, possibly in the southeast area across 14. But for residential growth, you know, with the fact that we have Pittsburgh on our north as our north neighbor and a city of Pittsburgh will, you know, will not be releasing any of that land or anything to allow into the village, you know, we have to kind of look at where our growth areas. And the value that we get through our growth is not through 12 acre parcels. You know, I don't doubt Jeff Mason. Is not through twelve acre parcels, you know, I I don't doubt Jeff uh Mason pays his taxes and everything like that. But our value is not one house on twelve acres, our value is honestly uh twenty-five houses. Or whatever it is on those twelve acres, um, you know, with with water sewer uh connections with roadway improvements. And, you know, uh, multiple, multiple homes that are, that are taxpaying, you know, uh citizens. So, so those are the things, and and when you start chunking up these areas on your boundaries, I've seen this happen in other communities too. That that I worked with uh before this world, uh before this job. And, you know, you start chunking up these areas and it makes it very, very difficult for long term development to occur. And and that's why, that's why, kind of, quite honestly, I think we feel like it's, it's just not a good thing for the village at this time. Um, developing out in the town, you know, way out in the town, way out of our uh kind of expansion area. We really, we, you know, that's kind of where the town is for, that's, that's uh, that's what it's meant for to be. You know, more rural character type subdivisions. But you can already see how this has kind of already been chunked up a little bit with the house that's out there now and and other houses. And it just makes it very, very difficult long term.
Right, and I think the precedent that we're talking about setting is. On one hand, it's sort of maintaining again a good relationship with the county and town and respecting the policies that they've maintained. But also, like I mentioned, the statement that we're making to other rural property owners to say, hey, once you've used up all your splits. Just come into the village, we'll take these.
Right.
You know, larger pieces of land with homes on them and bring them into the village. But as Jeff mentioned, doesn't really um, you know, move forward any of the long range. Uh, plans the village has and that's where we see, that's what villages are for, is to have denser. Um, residential development with public services and sidewalks and all that kinds of stuff. Um, we don't really also have a great um. Zoning district that this would fit into, so we do have a rural holding zoning district and it um. Asked for parcels that are thirty-five acres or larger. So if these would be brought in, it would be legal non-conforming parcels, and we're starting right off with that with. Um, you know, especially if there's a horse, there's hu- animal husbandry, that's conditional use permit, all these things that are really not designed to be. Village uses, there's, there's ways to go through that process, but um. Is that something that, again, if this happens with other requests, we want to all of a sudden have all these little formats that we're sort of. Um, you know, keeping tabs on, we have um, you know, a lot of other properties, businesses, things like that. That we um, you don't want to focus on and make sure that they are um complying with the zoning code and everything too. So, I, I can see, it could potentially be a slippery slope if we allow this one thing to happen. Even though I'm sure he would have a beautiful home and it would not affect anybody's view shed and quality of life and things like that. But it could be the first of uh many other requests in the future and just. Not sure that's the direction.
And could, and could really work against future development in that area, because typically, even even if Jeff doesn't. Stay in that parcel for very long, or maybe stays there a whole life, but um if he stays there and and then sells that. And someone says, well, I thought I was buying a, a, you know, a lot out in the country and now someone wants to come along and. Um, put a residential subdivision right next to me. And, you know, those, those are the things that we come up against all the time and and you as board. End up with boardrooms full of a bunch of people that say, you know, I I don't want that in my backyard.
All right, let's see, other board members that want to weigh in.
Randy?
I can't see you, yeah, good, thanks Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, yeah, this is another question for Mr. Mason. Uh, uh, I'm. It, I, I know, although you, you know, aren't looking to have multiple horses and, you know, and you just want to build a house on some property. I'm wondering if, if you've considered looking in like Green County or counties further out. Is there a reason why you, you keep looking right around the village of Oregon? Is it wanting to stay in the school district or what's the motivation?
Number of reasons, A, it's wanting to stay in the school district. Um, my girlfriend and I are looking to start a family very soon. Um, I work uh in Madison and uh it, uh, I have to commute. And my job requires that I be available to get into Madison uh in the downtown area fairly quickly. Living out in Green County is isn't just not practicable. I, yes, of course, I've looked out there, hundred percent. Um, it's, it's more affordable, like, why, why wouldn't I if if I possibly could? And quite frankly, I've lived in the village now for ten years and and I like it here. Um, I, 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 I don't want to leave. Um, I just, I am absolutely gobsmacked. I feel like some sort of a criminal here, listening to people talk like I've done some horrible thing, and I get it, and I get it. Uh, but from, but we can precedent our way, we could say, you know, you can say, well, in two hundred years, this could happen. Well, in, I guarantee you, the one thing is, we don't know what's going to happen in two years, two hundred years. I don't know, I don't know, you know, what's going to happen in two years, much less two hundred years. Um, so, yeah, I mean.
I think the, the, the largest lot in the village right now is, is, I think, just over an acre and a half, two acres. And those, and that was an un- very non-traditional lot in itself.
For residential, yeah, I also think the timeframe that we're talking about for future development here is probably more in the matter of. Um, you know, a decade or two and and not two hundred years. So just to kind of put that into perspective, this is within, you know, this is right on the other side of our. Um, boundary, it's not um, again, a further out kind of piece of property. So probably more imminent future than uh other.
Right.
Pieces in the periphery of the town.
Um, I'd like to just say one other thing, there's, there's no one o- other than the board, which is the people that matter. There's no one here speaking against me. Um, and, you know, when I went through this process in the town of Dunn. Um, I wanted to do a split and the other neighbors around that property showed up in force to say that they didn't want another home there. Um, and so, like, there's nobody here speaking against me. Now granted, there's no, I don't know why anyone would be sitting here saying, yes, we, we want him to move in, I'm sure I can go talk to these people. I, I know the gentleman that owns Robin Hill um next door. Um, and uh, and I'm sure the golf course would rather have one small home on the south end of that property than an apartment complex. Or a bunch of uh, or a bunch of buildings right across from their golf course. So I'm, promise you, I'll be a hell of a lot quieter than 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 that would be, so, um, but there's no one here speaking against me, I'll throw that out there.
All right, any other board member?
Yeah, me. So I, I just want to put it out there again, I understand where you're coming from, it was painful to move into the village from living in the country. I mean, I'll be quite honest, having neighbors is not, not my preferred way of live. But I do completely understand from the point of view of future development and supporting the debt that we just talked about. And also, um, you know, the, the town's position. And I think Wayne probably speaks more than Brian Duffin does about what the town would prefer, about losing tax revenue in the town. I would strongly recommend that you ask them for a waiver and follow and pursue that and be part of the town. Um, and I, I think that you're probably more likely, given what you've just explained. To have co- cooperation from them and uh then, then given everything that this board needs to consider. About the future of the village. And I've only lived in the village a little over a year. Uh, so I, I get what it means to live on a piece of property with a big house that you have designed in the country. Totally understand that desire. Um, and this is not personal, I think that you need to understand that this is not about you personally. This is about something that affects the village long term and short term.
And uh, this is Matt, uh, can I speak for just a moment?
Yeah.
So, uh, with respect to the, I, I don't know if a waiver would be available or not to allow this in the township. But as the village's attorney, I have to point out that that would be contrary to the village's interests. The village doesn't want, the, the reason for the county policy, uh, the policy on splits is to prevent this sort of thing from happening. To um allow for a more uh appropriate uh uh growth pattern, both in the town and ultimately in the village. So, um, certainly you have a right to seek a waiver, I don't know whether there's an opportunity to get one from a legal standpoint or not. But even if there is, I mean, my advice to the village would be, again, it's not personal, it, but to, to oppose that. Uh, the village is, uh, the staff recommendation here is to be supportive of the current policy to limit splits. And to prevent this type of split and to not facilitate it through annexation, so I don't think we would want to facilitate it in any other way either.
Okay, so, let me, let me just sort of chime in here, I'm gonna sort of. Kind, my thoughts kind of follow what Carleen was saying, I mean, I thought about this a lot and. And Jeff, I don't, I don't, it's not personal for me, I, I know what you want and I, uh, it, it's not a personal thing for me. And so, really what it comes down to for me is what's best for the village. I mean, as a, as an elected official, that's, that's what I keep saying to myself, what is best for the village? And I think in terms of future development, we're going to be looking this way. And so that, that's, that's the main thing for me is um. What is best for the village, and I, I don't think that this, this proposal is the best thing for the village, so. Anybody else? Yeah, Amanda.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, unless somebody else has a comment, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if that's what's needed here.
So Amanda, let me read what the staff recommendation is, okay, sorry, I didn't read it yet. So the village should not proceed with the annexation request in order to preserve maximum flexibility. And future usability of this planned neighborhood land. And respect the current farmland preservation practices of Dane County and the town of Oregon.
And, and this is Matt, can I weigh in one more time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need a formal action, this is just a conceptual review, so you don't actually have an annexation petition before you tonight.
Okay.
This, this was an opportunity for you to s- uh, see what is proposed and to share your perspective on it as trustees. Uh, as board members. Um, uh, I, so there's no need to take a vote. Um, I think, uh, you know, people have heard what those board members who, you know, if any other board members want to share their. Uh, perspective on this, I think that's appropriate, but I don't, I don't think there's a need for a vote.
Okay.
And then the petitioner can decide, the petitioner can decide, having heard the feedback, they can decide whether to proceed with a formal. Um, annexation petition or not, but frankly, this is to give them an opportunity to hear your perspective before they invest additional money. In the process that they would need to go through to proceed with the annexation and and there would be some additional expense if they want to pursue this.
Okay. Anybody else that looks forward, want to weigh in?
Yeah, Randy, uh, this is Derek. I was gonna say, kind of, yeah, kind of right on board with what you're saying. Uh, Randy, with, long term, you gotta look what's, what's best for the village. And I'm not, unless something kind of dramatic were to happen, I, I, I gotta say. I don't think that that would be necessarily best for, in the best interest of the village long term either.
Okay, Derek, thank you. All right. All right, yeah, Jerry?
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to point out that uh I spoke to Town Chairman Wayne Ace about two PM today. To get his uh opinion of this and how he feels uh, whether he is in favor or opposed to this. And he indicated that he would be imposed, opposed to this annexation. And uh, given the fact that he's opposed to it and we, uh, the village partners with. The township in in many ways and, you know, we're involved with the fire EMS, we're involved with. We were involved with Lincoln Road and and we hope to keep that, that relationship healthy. So I, I uh would tend to agree with Wayne Ace that I would oppose that. And, and finally, when you weigh this regarding whether or not it's a good thing or a bad thing for the village. Uh, we spoke earlier tonight about the fact that our debt levels are increasing dramatically in the near future. And the, the way to offset that, the best way to offset it is to add to our residential or business development. And I think the village is better served by uh waiting for a developer to bring. Uh, residential tract to the village in that parcel, of course, assuming it's approved by the township. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I guess, Matt, so we, we, um, Mr. Mason kind of knows, I think. Has heard the comments from the village board members and Matt, it's up to him whether, what he wants to do next.
Correct, he'll need to decide, he certainly has the right to proceed with the filing a petition for annexation, but he's, he's had the benefit of hearing. From uh, I think most of the trustees, maybe not all of them, but I, I think a good number of trustees had shared their reaction. And of course, he's heard the staff recommendation.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks, everybody, we'll, we'll move on. Um, we're onto three C, which is um, uh, community input. And this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board. And we'll, we're gonna talk a little bit about this later, but this is either on items on the agenda. Or it can be things off, not on the agenda. Uh, so, I don't know if we have, Candy, do you know, do we have anybody who, from the public, who would like to address? The board for a couple minutes?
No, not that, not that I'm aware of, but I did put the, the email that we received this afternoon in the packet under this item.
Okay, yeah, and I think we'll, we'll, we have some, some further information, a little further down on the, on the.
Got it.
Agenda too, so, okay, all right, so we don't have anybody who would like to, to address us, so let's go on to. See, let's go on to four, which is um approval of the June seventh, twenty twenty-one Village Board Meeting Minutes. If someone would like to make a motion for approval?
Go move.
All right, Mike? Second, who's second, Carleen? All right, Carleen, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, okay, thank you. All right, we're onto five, which is the uh approval of the vouchers. And let's get a, a motion in a second to get this on the table, I'm sure there's probably a few questions.
I'll second, or whoever, yeah.
All right, who was first then?
I got Peterson first.
All right, and then Jerry, do the second?
I, I'm, I think Amanda did.
So I have Peterson motioned and Balig seconded.
All right, perfect, perfect, all right. Questions for Lisa and Jeff, for anybody on vouchers? Who's got questions?
Um, I, Balig has a question.
All right, Mr. Balig, go ahead.
Patiently waiting for someone else to make a comment, but um, my question is. And it's on the, uh, I believe these are the credit card, yeah, they're the credit card uh charges. And uh, we've got uh one, three, one, four, eight on page seven for. Uh, ten thousand two sixty-four, and I think this is a split because on the very next page, there is a uh. A similar.
Are you talking about the, the sewer replaced mower?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that was a mower that we purchased last year, that was an approved purchase. And um, as with, when we can with vendors, we will have that put on the credit card. Because we, Lisa will explain, but we get, we get money back um by using the credit card for certain purchases. So that was, that was an approved budgeted uh purchase of equipment.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, when we get money back, where does it go?
Yeah, Lisa, where does it go?
It mysteriously, and it, um, it gets rolled into our miscellaneous revenue line in the general fund. And then so that helps to offset um expenses throughout the year.
Yeah, okay.
It's what help makes our budget balance.
Well, that's all that matters, right, Lisa?
Right, has to balance.
Do we get travel miles too?
I wish.
I want to know how the, the cell phone charges.
I want to know how the, the cell phone charges are so low. And I want to know if I reimbursed the village, if he will put me on your plan, because mine is nowhere near that low.
Yeah, we get some good rates.
All right, any other questions for anybody?
Yeah, Randy, I, I have one. Funny enough, I have the sewer replaced motor mark on my.
I did too, actually, I did too, yeah.
But down below, a little bit further down on that page, there's four thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and all it says is prosecutions. Just wondering what that, what that is.
That's for the attorney fees for court. And I forget the vendor name off the top of my head. It's a monthly, it's a monthly fee for, what's his name?
Illegal.
Tim, Tim Speerschneider.
Yeah.
The way.
The prosecuting attorney, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, not hearing any other questions. Candy, if you want to do a, do a voice book?
Let's do it.
The amount, let me just say, the amount is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
That's correct.
We're approving.
All right, Peterson?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Beelow?
Yes.
Balig?
Yes.
Glush?
Yes.
And Bashin? Yeah.
Okay, very good. Moving on to six, proclamations, announcements, eight is upcoming meetings and events. We do have a nice, and I don't know who puts this together, Candy, is this, is this a Martin thing? What's the, yeah, this is very helpful, so that you can pull out our calendars and put the dates in so we don't forget things. So it's in our packet, upcoming meetings, and I like also the upcoming events too, so we don't lose track of those, so. That's great. All right, and.
Randy, can I ask a question?
You may, yeah.
Uh, we're doing, starting in-person board meetings on the twelfth, there's one on the twelfth, one on the nineteenth. Those correspond to times I'm going to be out of town and I'm just wondering where, we are not. Doing any remote during that period, is that correct? So I will have to get in my car, drive back here to be a part of the meeting.
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, Mike. I think, I don't know, Martin, do you want to, want to address that now or is it? Do we have something later in the agenda? I can't remember.
Hybrid meeting is later in the agenda. I, I'll have an issue in August as well, so.
Yeah, there'll be some, some considerations that are addressed in the, under that item. But yeah, the, the July twelfth meeting for sure will likely not be hybrid, just because. There's a couple of different things that need to be addressed before we can. Commit to doing that, but we can talk about that in the, in the item.
All right, any other questions on that? And then I think also we had, this is part of this, I think. Is the, if you flip it over, there's coffee with the police chief, Peggy Croft is coming up on Friday twenty fifth. Eight to nine thirty at the Firefly. So that is happening as well. All right, let's go to seven, report of village officers. Martin did his report. I don't know, Martin, if you want to highlight anything or say anything.
Yeah, just a couple of things. So I had to note in my report, but just a reminder. The village board does have a, a joint public hearing with the planning commission next Wednesday on June thirtieth. So remember that one. And then as Mike mentioned. The first meeting in July will be rescheduled to July twelfth. Because July fifth is village holiday and observance of July fourth, which takes place on Sunday. And then also for that, since we're going to have. Two meetings within seven days, back to back, July twelfth, July nineteenth. If I'm looking into my crystal ball here, the July nineteenth meeting may have a fairly light agenda. So that may be an opportunity to talk about the village administrator's goals and priorities at that meeting. Rather than schedule a special meeting, because sometimes it can be a little difficult to. To have extra meetings in the summer with vacations and, and family activities and that sort of thing. So if that is acceptable to the board, that's what we'll, we'll plan on.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Martin. Everybody okay with that? That sounds fine. Okay, I see some thumbs up, yeah. Okay, very good. Okay, Martin, anything else from you?
I think I'm good.
Okay, all right, the mood along, we'll put a seven B, which is director of public works update. On the terrace tree program.
Well, it's been going pretty well. It kind of started off with a lot, or quite a few applications, but has kind of tapered off recently. So we're encouraging people to, to spread the word on this program. I think it's a great program. It allows up to one hundred dollars per tree, up to two trees on a property on the terrace. Area between the sidewalk and the curb, they have to be approved applications and everything, but so far we've received seventeen applications. Resulted a total of sixteen trees planted thus far. That was as of June seventh. And actually, under the vouchers that you had today were fifteen hundred dollars reimbursement back to the residents. So, and then some of the outstanding permits have yet to plant their trees. So I just, I think it's a great program. People I've talked to are kind of surprised about it. They're like, oh, that sounds like a great plan. The nurseries are, have been very supportive of everything and, you know, I don't know if anyone, if you're taking time and you just, as you drive down. Different streets, streets that have terrace trees look really nice. They, 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 they're shaded. They have, I mean, as long as they're maintained, that's the only problem, but we'll deal with that when, when the trees start to get bigger. But Randy, I know you're a big advocate for this and I think the boards would be very supportive of this program. So whatever we can do to, to kind of get the word out, we still have plenty of funds left to disperse.
Yeah. And so Jeff, what I, what I've been doing, I actually, for the board, I have two, I planted two, two terrorist trees. In, on my terraces, and when I sort of put the, the word out on the Facebook page. I've been sort of answering questions too. It's amazing how there's maybe some misinformation about, about the program. And so I've been answering those questions as I see them as well.
It's our first year, so we definitely have a few little bumps, but people just need to fill out, it's a single, simple, one-page application with a sketch. Submit that to me, plant the trees, or after they get the approved permit, plant the trees and then submit a reimbursement request. Which is the other form attached on there and then a copy of the receipt.
Yeah, the one caveat Jeff, I'll, I'll say is, like me, if you have a, if you have a H O A. You also need to get their permission in many cases to plant, so I would recommend getting. The village's permission first and then submitting the application to your H O A.
Well, here's, here's what I would tell you. Matt, maybe, are you listening? I don't think the H O A has a, any say over the right of way, correct?
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Us to get permission.
Well, they probably don't have the right to be able to do that. I mean, because it is, it's part of the right of way. It's not part of any of the personal property or private property. So it's actually a part of the, the right of way.
Okay.
The, the difference of that would be in the gated areas and that is in the gated areas of Bergamot. We do not own those right of ways. We only own.
I'm thinking that they think because the, the neighborhood is still under their control.
Yeah, I'm just telling, yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, under, if it's, if it's not a gated area, then there shouldn't be any issue.
Okay. All right. Very good, Jeff, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right, so at seven C is the village department head, staff or consultant comments. Nothing in our packet, but I think Martin said if any, anybody. Department head staff or anybody else has something to, to tell us, now is the time.
I just want to piggyback on the tree program. That money was borrowed in two thousand eighteen, so it has to be spent this year. So once we get to September, whatever funds that we have remaining, we're probably going to use the rest of the money. To replace maybe some of the trees downtown that have died and to. Put some trees back into the park, into the cemetery that we've had it taken down for the Emerald Dashmore, so.
Yeah, correct. And Jeff, I know you've been getting a couple of calls about people wanting to see if some of that, some trees could be put in medians.
Correct, correct, and, and we're looking into that as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other department head or staff or anything? Comments, all right, seven D, village board comments, from anybody? Hearing none, okay. We'll go on to A, eight, sorry, communication miscellaneous business. Items are for discussion, possible action. Eight A is minutes not for action, which is the May twelfth. Twenty twenty-one library board that we had in our packet, so no action required there. Eight B is the twenty twenty consumer competence report on, for Oregon Water Works. It's informational only, and Jeff, I don't know, would you like to say a word or two or something?
Yeah, sure. We're very proud of our long, you know, very good history with providing safe drink. Safe potable drinking water for our residents. These reports are given out every year. They talk about the, the testing that's been done. If there's been any. There's been any exceeds levels in any of the testing, it's talked about, it's discussed. But you know, in general, I just want to say, you know, a lot of people don't understand where our water comes from. It is from the groundwater. We have three active wells in the village. We'll be, we'll be drilling a fourth well in the coming year. And, and so I just, that's why I always remind people that our water comes from the ground. So when you're dumping stuff for whatever on the ground or flushing medicines or anything down the toilet or whatever. It's all stuff that does eventually affect our wells. And so I just want to remind you on that. But we do provide a very safe and clean water supply and my water staff, which is Don, Amos and Kevin. Just work really well to keep us tested and running smoothly.
All right, any questions for Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Jeff, we had one test for lead that came out above the action level. Where's the lead tested? Is that at the plant or is that on feeds into homes or?
Multiple locations, Mike. It's actually, there are, I think there are twenty, is there twenty or thirty homes? That, and, and different sample tap locations that we test throughout the village. Some of those are, if they're tested at the homes, they're at homes that have existing lead service laterals. It's not unusual every once in a while to have a, a, a single test come back on the high end. But. I mean, it, it's been common, at least in the time I've been here, where we have, you know, one a year maybe.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't surprise me. How much, if you had a guess, maybe you have, have more than a guess. How many lead laterals do we still have left in the village?
I think it's one hundred and sixty-four. Okay, and that's a hard number because it's, it's a hard number to really quantify because. You know, it's not always something that you know exactly, and then there are times where maybe. People had plumbers come in and replace laterals and they weren't recorded, that type of thing. What I will tell you is most of the lead services that we find are on much older portions of the village. Which lead services were extremely common for a while, lead and galvanized. If people are concerned, my water staff will come to your house. Take a look at the ladder, the lateral coming into the house and be able to give you a. You know, their opinion on what type of lateral you have. So if there are people that are concerned. But typically older, you know, we have some four-inch water main, and a lot of those along there are still lead service laterals.
Yeah, I know, Amanda and I, a couple of years ago, we both had ours changed when the street was reconstructed, you know.
Typically, when we're installing new water mains and we have new water and we have new water service laterals going. If we come across, we, we have a requirement in the village that if we come across the lead service lateral, that they're required to upgrade that. And that's usually into a copper.
Mine, yeah.
And that's at homeowner expense for the lateral.
That is correct.
People, because of that, timing it with, when we, the street is torn up. Makes it more cost effective for homeowners to wait, so also over time. The inside of the pipes tends to calcify, so if it's been there a long time, there's very little lead probably. That will get into the water because it's been there for so long. It's only when you start to mess with it, when there's construction nearby and doing stuff. So when, when that happens, that's a good time to change it.
Correct. Well put.
Okay, all right, any, that was informational only. Thank you, Jeff, for that.
We publish that annually and that goes also on our website for anyone who wants to review it in depth. And they can, and as it in there, there's contact information to get ahold of us if there's any questions.
Okay. Okay, moving on, eight C, we have a resolution before us, resolution number twenty-one thirty-five. Twenty twenty compliance maintenance annual report for the Oregon wastewater treatment facility. And we do have a staff recommendation to approve the, the resolution as presented. And Jeff, I'm assuming you probably want to give us a little bit something.
Yeah, I'll give you the, the Cliff Notes version here. In, in a nutshell, we're required under our, under our permitting. With Department Natural Resources to file this compliance maintenance annual report. It just is a report on our flows, testing, any kind of problems that we're experiencing in the year. And it all comes down to kind of a, a grade at the very end here. I'll get to the end. By and large, we, we get As on, on everything. The one thing we tend to and, and have for the last. I'll probably think ever since I've been here and probably before, we tend to have high flows at our wastewater plant. And as you know, those board members who've been on the board for a while know that. Our system has had a significant amount of infiltration and inflow, or what we call I N I flow. And I'm trying to get to the, trying to get to the score here is very end. Score and talk. Thanks, Elise, for letting me kind of chew gum and walk at the same time here. So anyhow, the infiltration and inflow is basically what happens when you have cracks in your pipe. You have maybe leaky manholes. Obviously, the last couple of years with the extreme amount of water, we've had. Our surface water from rainfall events, we see extremely high groundwater levels. And so we see those flows increase because there's not a single system out there that's watertight. And so what we try to do is we work with our engineers, our plant, myself. We, we work to find out what areas are the, the worst areas in the village and then start to go in and fix those leaks. You work on grouting manholes, lining them, lining, lining sections of sewer, replacing really bad sections. And you know, we've done, we did a very large project last year for I N I removal. And I think I had a report last year on that where it was a, a significant amount of flow that was in twenty twenty. Pretty well, going into this year, twenty twenty-one. So everything else we score, we got a three point eight four GPA, which is, you know, near the top of our class. And Cal, Sunny and Jim, they really do an exceptional job down at our wastewater plant. Not only making sure that you can see how everything else is, is of, of a high top marks and everything like that. It's the influence loading that gets us a little high. We're working with our engineers and as you know from the. Facility plan, as our increased capacity is one of our improved projects in the coming years.
All right, very good. All right, so we're looking for, well, Mike, you got a question, yeah.
Not so much a question, a comment. I talked to Jeff about this earlier today. If you go to page two oh four in the packet.
Okay.
It talks about operation and maintenance of, of the district. And some of this kind of raised questions with me as I was going through it. That, for instance, to pull out a number, mainline rehabilitation, we did two point two percent of it last year. Which means every five hundred years, we will have rehabilitated our entire system. We will have uh, rehabilitated our entire system, um. There's, there's, you know, the system is not designed clearly to last a hundred, five hundred years. So there's uh, some indication that. Um, there's probably maintenance that has been deferred that is backlogged.
And we discussed this a little bit, um, and those are, those are things that we are continuing to look at. Just, you know, just like I was telling uh, Mike or discussing with Mike this afternoon, is, you know, some of these lines that we're using are. Are very, very, very old, I mean, we're talking sixty, seventy, eighty years old, some of them. And are still working just fine, um, and so. You know, what we do is, as we televise certain areas of the village, as we um, say, do North Main Street project. Like what we're doing right now, we will have, we have our engineers go in, televise the entire line. Look at the weak system portions, the lines that are maybe really leaky, that need to be lined. Um, or if it's really uh, out of uh. If it's, if it's just kind of up and down on the uh, the profile, we'll go in and we'll actually replace it, which is what you're seeing out in front of. Moonstar and, and Bill's Grocery right now with the replacement of uh, old sewer with brand new sewer. So yeah, um, Mike's right, you know, I mean, that's like, we always, there's always more stuff to be done, and we're trying to balance that between budget and, and everything, but. Um, if we do see critical areas, they are being addressed.
Yeah, my, my comment was not meant to be critical, it was just to call. To people's attention that, that there are areas, we need to be aware of maintaining these systems.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, how about, I'm gonna motion the second to approve the res- resolution as presented.
So moved.
All right, second.
Derek, a second.
All right, Derek, thank you, any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Perfect, okay, we're on, we're on to A D. Which is a, should be an easy one, hire Mac Dillman to fill Public Works Crew Person position. At twenty dollars, staff recommendation to approve, uh, motion to approve with. DPW's proposed salary schedule conditional on passing the background evaluation. And the future annual salary adjustments approved by the village board during subsequent budget processes.
Yep.
Anybody, that, that should be an easy one, anybody want to make a motion for that? All right, Amanda, thank you, second.
Second.
All right, Carleen, thank you, any other discussion, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, all right, we're on to A D, which is authorized public works director, Jeff Ralph, so this is candidates. For Village Engineer slash Assistant Director of Public Works position, recommendation is to approve. And Jeff has talked about this uh, with us previously about the public works restructuring, Jeff, if you want to say. Ten, ten words, ten seconds, it's up to you.
Yep, okay, yeah, this is just part of our plan, um, I think it's, things are coming together and it's, it's looking really good. I think we'll get some great candidates uh, uh, out of this, because honestly, we're a great community, and we think we have a great team to work with.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second on that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, very good.
Thank you.
All right, A F, maybe another quick one. Hire Bonnie Hagan to fill Senior Center Adult Daycare Program Substitute Position. At thirteen sixty-six per hour, effective immediately, uh, staff recommendation is, the motion is to approve. Amanda's.
Yeah.
Amanda and, and Mike, I think I saw, all right, any other discussion, actually, Rachel would be thrilled to get this approved tonight. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, moving along, eight G, addendum to the twenty twenty-one purchase of services agreement between Dane County. And the Village of Oregon to provide nine thousand three hundred in additional funding. For the My Meal My Way program at Ziggy's Restaurant, recommendation again is to approve the denim as presented. Um, boy, Dane County has always been very generous to us, here's some more money for our seniors, terrific. Anybody want to make a motion, the second? No brain.
Motion.
All right, Carleen.
Derek, a second.
All right, Derek, uh, I don't know, um, Rachel, you want to say anything, I think it's, it's just a good thing.
Yeah, the, the program's been well-used, and we are gonna run out of funding without this additional money, so. All you guys have to do is say, yeah, send us the money, and they'll send us the money.
All right, all right, we're gonna do that right now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose. Okay, that's.
Randy, I, Randy, I just saw that Ziggy's just celebrated their fifth, I think it was their fifth anniversary with the village, is that?
Wow, that's going by fast. All right, we're on to eight, H is, is contractor services between the state and Wisconsin Department in. Of Administration and the Village of Oregon for low-income house, household water assistance program. The recommendation is to approve the contract as presented, um, anybody, I don't know. There was a, I don't know if there was any, there was a little bit of information, the forms of things. Um, Martin, do you, do you have any, think, my, one of my questions, like, who can apply, how do we find the people who need the? The assistance, that sort of thing, or is that yet to come?
Uh, that is yet to come, so this is a new program. Um, it was, uh, the funding is coming from the federal uh. Legislation that passed at the end of twenty twenty, of, of twenty twenty related to COVID relief. And so some of these funds are starting to work their way down, um, state level, and. Um, some of these funds are, are targeted for uh, helping uh, individuals pay for. Uh, water and wastewater services, um, and so the state DOA is running this program. And they've reached out to municipalities to sign on to it. Um, and there's still more information kind of coming uh, in the future, and the, the timing of it. Uh, but we think it's gonna be a pretty uh, good program for people who can take advantage of it, and um. Since it's being run by the DOA, I think there's very little that we have to do uh, on the village side.
All right, uh, let, why don't we get, let's get a motion in the second, then we can have a little bit more discussion. Can I get a motion in a second for approval?
Amanda.
And, okay, all right, we got a, got a motion in the second, Carleen, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just thinking that we probably know who is having trouble paying their water bills. And can make referrals to the DOA on, on who might, who they might approach.
Yeah.
People might not actually apply unless they're.
Right, that's a, that's a very good point, I thought of that too, um, Martin, do we, do we, we don't have any idea how much funding there is.
Uh, no, I don't know how much funding there is, just for the state.
Okay, is it, is it just households, or it, can businesses be included, are included, or not, or we don't?
It's just for households, it's for uh, for low-income homes that are affected by this.
Okay. All right, anybody else question, it's a great, great program.
Yeah, it's a totally new, um, so it's a lot of questions to be answered, but um. It looks like it's a, gonna be a really positive program for people to take advantage of.
Good, yeah, okay, all right, we got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
All right. Aye.
Close, okay, terrific, uh, we're on to eight, uh, eight I, which is. Twenty twenty budget amendment number three, transfer one hundred thousand of general fund, unassigned fund balance. To the equipment replacement fund, the staff recommendation is to approve the amendment as presented. Why don't we get a motion in a second, let's get it on the table first. I'll take a motion.
Now, I'm gonna make that motion.
All right, so we'll, we'll give it to Jerry and then Amanda, how's that?
Sure.
All right, discussion, questions. All right, pretty straightforward, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, perfect, uh, A J, agreement for fresh, fresh food services with. Was it, I can't even say it, it's getting late for me, guys, you know, I should have been at eight o'clock, so. Ricky and Melky, for wetline delineation in learner conservation park. Staff recommendation is move to approve the agreement as presented. Let's get a motion in a second on the table.
Make a motion.
All right, Carleen, and then we'll give second Amanda, perfect, any discussion, or Jeff, or anybody, you want to say anything on this one, Jeff?
Not necessarily, nothing, that's not my memo there.
Yeah, it was a good, good memo, okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, close, okay, on to eight K. Proposal for defend, the best defense security and fire protection for sprinkler system inspections. And RP backflow testing at one oh one South Alpine, future home of the village hall. Staff recommendation is to approve uh, the proposal, and I'm guessing uh. Jeff, this is just kind of some regular maintenance that we need, should, should be doing.
Correct, yeah, correct, we're, we're gonna see a few of these come through, uh, as we now are owners of that building outright. Um, and, and the bank and the other two tenants are, are tenants. So we're responsible for the fire protection system, the backflow preventer, the elevator maintenance, um, HVAC maintenance, all those type of things, so. Um, my plan with this of the building is, is not to rock the boat right off the bat, as long as they seem reasonable. Um, we'll continue to use the same services, at least for now, until we get into the building and uh, start working towards. Uh, streamlining a lot of those contracts.
Yeah, okay, perfect, all right, so we need a motion in the second to get this thing approved.
Derek will move.
Derek, thank you.
Talking.
All right, Mike, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, all right, we're moving along, we're on to eight, eight L, purchase of a twenty twenty-one Chevy Silverado. LT twenty-five hundred HD pickup from Zimbridge Chevrolet, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Staff recommendation is to approve.
I'll, I'll approve that for discussion.
All right.
Or motion it, I'll make the motions for it.
Okay, I'm on a second.
Peter, send well.
All right, Amanda, thank you, all right, discussion. Uh, first question is, um, I assume that's in the budget, Jeff?
It is, actually, this was our twenty nineteen borrowing, uh, we, we, I held off buying it last year for, for different reasons. Um, and uh, I will tell you this, if anyone's been out. Vehicles are in very short supply, and uh, we'll be bringing another vehicle to you on July twelfth. A flatbed that was part of our budget for this year, um, we're, and we really end up buying right off the lot. Um, but the good thing is, they give us fantastic municipal discounts.
Okay, my second question is, how long have you had the Silverado?
Uh, we haven't had it yet, is that, no, it has not been purchased yet.
So you're not using it yet?
No, 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 that, that, you know, and I've never, have I ever purchased equipment, no, it was, I sold equipment with, before we had the final board approval. I sold the youth center, you'll view a center.
Good question.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I just question.
Yeah, Derek.
Yeah, just uh, one quick wa- question, um, so this is just for the truck, I'm assuming all the village decaling and all that kind of stuff comes later.
And additional, right, yeah, we have up, upfitting charges, and that's covered under our, uh, under. With utilities.
Okay, is that still part of the twenty nineteen? That's kind of done differently.
It is, it is part of uh, that plus uh, out of our utility funds.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, anybody else, all right, we got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're on to M, cost reimbursement agreement between Craig C Culver Beneficiary Grantor Trust. Uh, April thirtieth, twenty fifteen, in the Village of Oregon. Staff recommendation is to approve the agreement as presented, con- conditioned on providing. A certification of trust and payment of two thousand dollar deposit. If I want to make a motion in a second, it's on the table.
I can make a motion.
Amanda and I heard.
Derek.
Derek, okay, all right, discussion, who? Elise, I don't know, do you want to say anything about this, so we make sure we understand it?
Randy, this is just our standard reimbursement agreement uh, form we do with um. Developers on larger projects, that we might have a couple rounds review, so we did this with Lake Stone, uh, Habitat, others. So we'll hold a two thousand dollar deposit from Culvers for um, costs that we. You know, we'll, we'll put towards um, you know, nickel fees, planning fees, things like that, so they get billed monthly, and then if um. As long as they pay all their bills, the, that, the cost is returned to them.
Yeah, and Elise, I'll just say, this, you know, we started this, what, a couple of years ago, this is one of the smartest things we've ever done. Is to sort of protect ourselves.
Yep, just in case, not too worried about this with Culvers, but.
No.
Sometimes if they walk away, we still have those bills to pay, so we don't.
Yeah.
This one comes with Scoopy coupons at the end, I believe.
All right.
Yeah, I think there's some.
Good. All right, so we got, we got a motion in the second, that's.
Uh, this is.
Yeah.
This is, Matt, uh, sorry, I'm, I'm gonna ask that you make a small amendment to your motion. Um, that, that in addition, so the background is that I was informed today that. I need to change the name of the party to this agreement, and the next one you're gonna be looking at. So instead of the Craig C Culver Beneficiary Grantor Trust. The party to this agreement is going to be the uh, Craig Culver Properties LLC, so. Uh, the a- amendment would be, in addition to the, so, I'm sorry, let me go on, so the party will be Craig Culver Properties LLC. Um, um, the sole member of that LLC is the Craig C Culver Beneficiary Grantor Trust. So the conditions, uh, in addition to the one condition which was identified already. Which is that we receive a certification relating to that trust, I would also ask that you. Um, add the condition that the agreement be modified to name, to identify. The other party here as the, as Craig Culver Properties LLC, and that we receive a resolution confirming. Uh, that that LLC has approved this agreement.
Okay, Candy, do you have that?
Yeah, that's good with me, I think.
Yeah, I wanted to ask.
Second.
Who, who, who was the, I can't remember who the first was.
Derek, or?
Derek.
Yeah, yeah.
He's okay with that amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Candy, do you think you got it?
I got it.
Okay, all right, excellent, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, excellent, so also related, next one is N, agreement between the Village of Oregon. DA JK LLC and Craig C Culver, and we'll make that Properties LLC. April thirtieth, twenty fifteen, regarding development performance obligations. For ten, ten fifty-three Park Street, recommendation is to approve the agreement as presented. Um, conditioned, and Matt, you want to, you want to leave that the same condition on cer- certification of trust?
Yes, please.
Okay, and then trust signing the cost reimbursement agreement, so if you all remember, we talked about this last time. And they agreed to what we suggested, and so this is basically. Um, approved, approving that agreement. Is there anything else we should say, Elise, or Martin, on this one?
There, there's a, one thing I want to say that we didn't get a chance to talk about last time, that I didn't really think about until I was drafting the agreement. As, as uh, you may recall, the agreement was structured so that if the construction of. A project is not completed by July thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. Then Culvers would need to make a payment to the village each year, and you can see up here what those payments are each year. The, the question really arose when I was drafting the agreement, uh, what, what should we do if. Um, we find ourselves at some point during this payment schedule, and. Construction is completed mid-year at some point, and so I, um, actually, I don't. I don't, I don't think you have up, uh, the actual draft agreement, um. The, uh, I've added a paragraph that says that. Each year essentially starts the clock over again. So if we get to August one of twenty, or if we get to July thirty one of twenty twenty five and they haven't completed it. Then they would make a payment of twenty thousand dollars on August one of twenty twenty five. And then they get another year before they have to make another payment. So the idea would be that if they complete the project. Halfway through that next year, instead of prorating that next forty thousand dollar payment for half the year. They wouldn't have to pay anything unless they didn't complete the project by July thirty one of twenty twenty six. Now. I have told Culvers that that is not something I had a chance to discuss with the board at the last meeting, and so that I would be explaining this issue tonight, and I didn't know. What the board's position would be on that issue. Um, I just chose a particular approach just to get something in front of you. So it seems to me, so one option is to just approve what I drafted, which basically starts the clock over each year during this. Payment term during this term. But if you'd like to take a different approach. Um, and prorate those payments each year for a partial year where it's not complete, we can talk about that and I could. Uh, take that back to Culvers and, and see what they, uh, say.
All right, what do we think? Carleen, your hands up.
Um, my question is based on the conversations that you've had and how things, you know, how construction is going in general. Do you anticipate that, that it's not gonna be finished and that this would actually end up being a problem?
Well, what they're telling us is that, um, they are very excited to construct the new facility and they anticipate that it will be completed. Uh, before the July thirty one, twenty five, twenty twenty five date. That's what they're telling us, of course. Um, I don't know whether that's gonna happen.
I would just say I don't need a prorating. I. I, I think they intend to build and if they miss it, they pay and they, they have another year. I, I don't see the need to get complicated about this. That's just me.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree and, and given how quickly once a project is started, it goes up. I mean, do, do we have a, uh. An anticipated start date on, on this? Just watching other, other thing, projects like this. They tend to go really quickly once they're started.
What we've heard from Culvers is they intend to start in twenty two, so probably in the spring.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? So it sounds like from Carleen and Amanda, you, you would, you prefer just to keep what we. Had agreed upon, is that, am I correct?
Yeah, I'm go with what Matt drafted.
Also with Matt drafted, so Matt, this is different than.
It, uh, it's, it's the same as what you've seen and what we've discussed, except this last little piece, which is. What happens if we, if we have a, uh, a year where they've completed mid-year, then how do we deal with that mid-year payment? So what I'm hearing from a couple of trustees is that they're okay with what I described is how I drafted it where.
Okay.
They get a new clock each year.
Okay.
And they don't have to pay unless they fail to complete by the end of that year.
Okay. Anybody else wanna weigh in? All right, well, I'll take a motion in a second to approve the agreement as presented.
I move.
All right, Carleen. And Amanda. Okay, any other discussions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Perfect, all right, we're getting there. We're on to nine, which is reported committees, items are for discussion and possible action and. Nine A is the plant commission, so we are, Martin, I am, am I correct? We are gonna have a public hearing here on this. Discontinue of this street, is that correct? Would you like to have that?
Yep, that's correct. Um, but we will, we'll save action for the resolution until July twelfth. There's a, there's a whole bunch of Highlands and Netherwood items that are coming. Um, and we're just gonna approve them all in one fell swoop at the July twelve meeting.
So we'll have, we'll, we'll have our public hearing here on resolution number twenty one, twenty two, resolution to discontinue. How do you say this, Martin? Lindell Street?
Lindell's.
Lindell Street, okay. So the first thing is we're gonna open the, open the public hearing. And Candy, do you know, do we have anybody? We'll, we'll open the public hearing and we'll go to public comments. Do you think we have anybody here that would like to speak on the, on this?
No one's, no one's raised their hand electronically.
And, and maybe, maybe Elise, just for the, the benefit of the board and we had stuff in our packet, can you just get like, give us a thirty second? Kind of what, why we're doing this?
Sure, um, I think there might be a map that will be helpful explaining this. So, um, this Lindell Street is just. North of the Tarkenton parcel that's in the process of being annexed into the, the village. That's, uh, the planned area for the flats, multifamily. Housing, um, when the neighborhood was originally laid out, Lindell Street was, as you can see here, envisioned to be, uh. Sort of a thoroughfare, it would connect into future development that would happen to the south, but. Um, since the flats project is gonna be sort of a self-contained development. Uh, now what the plan for Lindell Street is going to be a cul-de-sac, so. Uh, there's just a realignment of the right of way and this is just the process to vacate that right of way and then the, the. Final plat will have the new layout with that cul-de-sac shown.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and. The, the action on this, we'll take it with the, the plant commission on July twelfth. Uh, with the village board and the plant commission, uh, meeting together. So we're finished with that one, that was fast. Number ten is unfinished business, we have none. Uh, eleven is new business, uh, twenty twenty two budget schedule, staff recommendation is to approve. As presented to us and Martin did a nice schedule for us, I assume. With some dates that we can get into our calendars for the budget. It's always kind of a, it's a hectic. Couple of weeks, we, we meet a lot to sort of get the budget in order, so. Um, unless somebody has questions, I'll take a motion in a second to. Approve the budget schedule for twenty twenty two.
Question for Martin.
All right, everybody's talking at once. Jerry?
Yes, uh, I'm looking ahead to the, uh, draft budget review by the board on the fourth and the nineteenth. To the twenty first, um. Are those, those aren't Monday nights?
Yeah, yeah, the fourth and eighteenth are the first and third.
My copy says nineteenth.
Oh, yeah, you're correct. The, the fourth is right, but yeah, it's the, you're right, it's eighteen.
Should be October eighteenth, Martin?
Yes, the eighteen, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Martin.
Yep, so just that correction there, yep.
Okay.
All right, so I'll take the motion in a second, get this approved.
Can I ask a question?
You may, yeah.
Two, um, are we, uh, using our, our finance committee at all to do any, to look at any. Preliminary things or more. Intense breakdown of the budget? Is that? Uh. I, I don't know, I guess I'd like to request that we have a finance meeting just to. You know, meet, meet more with. Like before we get to this draft budget, it just seems like we get to that before it comes to the whole board and if there's any questions about. How money is being spent, it almost feels too late to ask questions at that point. Does that make sense? Uh, like I, you know, like if you were gonna say, well, I, I'd like to see us spend more money on this or that. By the time it comes to us and the great big binder, it feels very permanent and.
Uh, Bala will speak to that if Randy would like.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, you wanna answer?
I, Amanda, I understand, I certainly understand what you're saying. Um, and believe me, that budget isn't final until we adopt that budget in December, but. On the fourth, we have a budget review by the village board. And then on the twentieth of September, we have a budget kickoff and overview meeting. Um, it, I mean. I think if you wanna review things, we have September twentieth and we have October fourth. And then, of course, you have the eighteenth. And the twenty second and the twenty eighth.
Sure, I, uh, I guess when we've done the budget in the past, we look at it in sections. You know, like one meeting was to look at these departments and then the next meeting was to look at these departments and it, it was always. Different. There wasn't a time when, you know, we get to sit. Down with a department head necessarily and discuss it. Are, are they gonna be coming before the board as they. Write their budgets and like allow us to ask questions or. Look more closely at things.
As I understand it, unless I'm wrong, Amanda, that's what these meetings are. The department heads are there. And again, you've got, uh, the department heads will be there on the twentieth of September, October fourth. October eighteenth. And again, you're all, I mean, there's nothing saying that you can't contact the department head in between.
Andy?
Yeah, can I just, just one, one, hold it, one thought, Mike, Martin, you're looking like you need to wanna say something, no?
Uh, well, no, I mean, I can just add on to it. I mean, we're, you know, I talked to Lisa about the schedule and, and. Basically tried to mirror what has been done in the past. Um, so, you know, coming out of this meeting. Basically, we have the department heads start to put their budgets together. They, they get the worksheets and they start working on them. Um, and then they have that information back to us at the beginning of August. And that's when, you know, Lisa and I compile the budget together. Um, and then we sit down individually with each, uh, department head and review that in full context of the overall budget. Um, and then, yeah, we get into September and that's when we start having, uh, these meetings with the board. Um, September thirteenth, we'll have Ellers, uh, here with, uh. Their analysis of the long-range financial plan and the capital improvement plan. And then we'll get into the budget kickoff and an overview meeting with the board on the twentieth. And then, yeah, well, in the fourth and then October eighteenth meetings. Um, we'll get into more of the nitty gritty of, um, specific funds and budgets. Um, and being able, able to ask, uh, specific questions. So. I mean, this is, I guess, in talking with Lisa, this is kind of how things have, have operated in, in recent years. Um, but certainly if, if the board, uh, feels differently, we can, we can make those adjustments.
Mike, you wanted to jump in here?
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask, uh, Martin, what he's run into with finance committees in his other, um, past lives. Um, because to me, um. I mean, I look at this finance committee and it hasn't met in five years. Um, and I'm kind of questioning why I got appointed to it, uh, if it has no life and no purpose. And yeah, that seems to me one of the most important things that we should be doing as a board is overseeing the budget and finances of the village, um. So looking to you, Martin, what, 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 how's this handled elsewhere?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, um, when I was with the city of Monroe, at least at that time, they had a finance committee that oversaw. Uh, the budget process, so a lot of this, um. Information that was happening as far as the nitty gritty details of different funds was happening at that level. Um, but over my time there, um, they started kind of moving away from that. Um, because what they were finding was, is the finance committee would talk and review the budget. And then it would go to the village board and then it would be a complete rehash of, of everything that was talked about at the finance committee. So. In the interest of efficiency, they just decide, well. Because of the, the overarching nature of the budget. Let's just take it to the village board, have the entire village board discuss this rather than a subset and then rehash it all over again. Um, with the village of Point At where I was recently, they didn't have a standing committee structure. Uh, they had a committee of the whole, so it was basically just a committee of the village board. So they would have a special. Committee of the whole meeting, um, where they would just discuss, um, business. And then the village board meetings were held for action items. So it's, it, it just comes down to community preference. Um, you know, Monroe was kind of moving away from that model and, um, Point At had already kind of entirely moved away from that model.
And that's kind of what happened here too, right, Jerry, from what you.
Yes, exactly, Mike. Uh, we used to have, uh. We used to start our finance meetings talking about the budget right after Labor Day. And, uh. The thing that started happening was all the members of the board would show up for finance meetings and ask questions at finance. And then we'd go into our budget meetings and it'd be like, uh, total rerun. So, and as, as Martin indicated, uh, in, in the, uh. In regards to efficiency, we just, we just went to total. Board meetings for budget.
Yeah, and the, the other thing too, that, at least in Monroe, that they were running into is, you know, they had these committees of three. Um, and then you could get two members that were a majority on that. And so, you know, a finance committee was making a recommendation for a budget up to the full board. Well, you know, five other members may completely disagree with those two members who. You know, recommended that budget, so you may send up a budget from finance committee that needs to be completely re. Retalked about and redone because the other five members disagree with those two members.
Yeah.
Randy?
Yeah.
So just, just as, cause we've had this question before from other board members on like the public works committee or the personnel committee. And what, and, and this, like, a lot of this was set back, you know, and Mike and, and exactly right for efficiency. What we've used, say, public works meetings for are items that we believe. Would be longer-term discussion items. Uh, maybe it's a conflict of something going on or a change in process or a change in. How we are going to manage something that would allow maybe a little more time for in-depth discussion and review. Um, and so that's, that's why we've, you know, we, we don't hold very many public works committee meetings, but when we do, they tend to be very. Mission-focused towards, uh, specific items.
Yeah, yeah, and just an example popped in my head, I could see a public works meeting, talk about. Salt or something like that, you know, more in, in-depth discussion.
Exactly. If, if we were to say, really make a major change in how we were handling the salting of our roads and the condition of the roads in the winter. Then we would wanna kind of bring that first before the public works committee meeting, just for. More opportunity for public discussion and input from board members on that.
Yeah, okay.
And when, and when we have had. Kind of semi-controversial topics before public works, we'll have sometimes a majority of board members that still want to attend that. There, they wouldn't be voting members on that committee, but they would want to attend just to be able to listen to the public on it.
Okay.
So, can I just expand a little more on what I'm thinking here? I mean, bless you. There, uh, there. Uh, there isn't a lot that's very controversial in the village, you know, so I'm, I'm kind of racking my brain thinking like, what would need more in-depth discussion of the budget? Um, and I, I can think of some people that might wanna take a, in more in-depth look at, for example, the police department budget. You know, uh, how much money are we spending on training? What kind of training? Things like that. And, and the finance committee is where you wanna have that, not necessarily the whole village board, because I, you know. I, I think our police chief is doing a wonderful job and I'm not trying to single her out or this topic or anything like that, but. But there are people who probably want more in-depth information and I don't. Think that level of detail exists in the budget that we see and we talk about at the village board level.
Well, then, uh, if I could interject, Amanda, then you just need to ask those questions. I mean, we don't limit those meetings to any timeframe. And any, I mean, and they are, uh, televised to the public. They are in person, so public can show up at the meetings, so there's no reason the public can't find out anything they want. So there's no reason the public can't find out anything they want to know, either at the meeting or during a telecast. And by then, I don't know if I'm. Getting ahead of myself here, but but I think we're gonna offer a hybrid version of board meetings too, so. I. I just don't think we need to be redundant, that's all.
Just. My good, I I just kind of chime in on what Amanda said. I I hate to. Sacrifice transparency for the interest of expediency, so. I don't know, I don't think necessarily. An additional meeting or a public hearing. Or anything like that necessarily goes amiss when it comes to how the how the dollars of the village are spent. I mean, we go through approval of vouchers. Every board meeting. And yeah, it may be redundant, but I think it gives more people a chance to hear what's going on, so not necessarily opposed to that either.
You know, and I'm not opposed to people knowing what's going on. It's just that we want to, the way this conversation started was want to have finance meetings for the budget first. And then have board meetings for the budget. Now, the only way I would agree to that is if the majority of the board agrees not to go to the finance meetings. But in the past, that's not been the case. Everybody shows up. I mean, we've had very, very dedicated trustees in the past. And they've all shown up for all the. Finance meetings. And as Martin indicated. We finally decided to go away from that model because, again, it was redundant. It has nothing to do with doing a disservice to the community. Or hiding anything. It just has to do with, why should board members sit through that twice? That's my point.
If I could put a process thing on the the table here, since this wasn't really supposed to be a discussion of the finance committee. Is I believe it's part of the. Discussion we'll be having on strategic planning.
Yeah.
Maybe we just move that.
Yeah.
Items to talk about some of our committee structures and how we intend to use them.
Yeah, let's.
July seventeenth.
Yeah, let's put it on one of the first things we talk about. And and Mike, just for FYI, I I didn't put you on the finance committee. To punish you. I didn't, I didn't know that they hadn't met, to be honest, for five years. So I didn't put you on there for any kind of punishment. So I didn't know that it had been that long, so.
Randy?
Yeah.
As it stands, I've I've accomplished all of my committee meetings for the year by going to the board of review meetings.
Well, we'll have to find something else for you to do then. But no, Mike, I think that's a really good suggestion is it's it's sort of getting into that. The priorities thing, and this was one of them. And this, there'll be time enough in the July that let's let's have some more discussion. On this, there's there's both ways. I mean, one thing we could say is that each of us come to those scheduled board meetings. With a lot of questions, as many questions as we can, and ask them and don't be afraid to ask them. We do, we do get the agendas in advance, so. Yeah. Just a matter of going through them and listing your questions. Yeah. Does that sound like for everybody? That sound like a reasonable, let's, let's kind of put this on hold until the. Our our next priority meeting and talk a little bit more about it. Does that sound okay? I'd still like to see if we can, is it, are you guys okay with us approving this but this budget schedule that we have in front of us? So we can get that on our calendars.
It's okay with me.
And if it's okay, I need a motion in the second.
I'll make the.
All right, second.
Second.
Okay, okay. All right, so all in favor to say aye.
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 Okay. All right, eleven B, we're getting near the end. Public comment involvement and participation in village board meetings. Martin, do you wanna? Do you want to say anything about this? I mean, we kind of did this in the beginning. I know, I know there's been some questions about. When the public can talk, when not to talk. I think you did a nice job including some really good information. At least for me to get a better understanding in our packet as to what, you know, what what should happen. And like we did tonight, anybody could speak on the bud, on the agenda or something off the agenda. I don't know, do you want to say anything else?
No, I mean, I think, like you said, I had a memo that I put together in the packet. There's a really good resource from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, their legal counsel put just a great. Article together about public comment and and common questions that come up. This isn't unique to the Village of Oregon. This topic comes up everywhere and very often. The I I mean, obviously, I think most of us agree that, you know, public input is a good thing and makes what we do better. But there are a lot of considerations to think about. Just because of the the legal structure in which local governments have to operate in. And I've kind of laid them out there and and the article does a great job of of doing that as well, so. I know Mike, trustee one should brought this up, so I mean, we can, we can answer any questions or or. You know, if there's some other piece that we missed here, we can certainly try to cover it.
Randy?
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, what I actually brought up, Martin, and and I like what you wrote here, I'm not gonna. Argue with anything that you have in place. What I actually brought up was a concept of public participation in meetings, which is a little broader than just public comment. But first to focus on the public comment, the things that. I agree with you on, I mean, we should time limit people, we should have a designated period. I personally would like to see it at a predictable time, so as early in the meeting as possible. For someone who has other duties at night, like children and meals and things to prepare that. That they're not coming to a meeting and having the public comment period pushed off. After a discussion of an audit report or. Or, you know, a board meeting with the library or the planning commission or something like that, but. They can come in, they can make their comments and they can go if they're tied up for that night. I think, you know, we should be open to anyone making a comment, whether it's on the agenda or off the agenda clearly. As you very clearly laid out in the letter, there are limitations on what we as board members can discuss, but that's different from. From what citizens can discuss. The, if we have special comment periods, like I was, one of the last. Planning Commission meetings I was at, they they broke up their comments section by section throughout, but none of them were noticed. So. And it was all the new business that had the comments. So people early on were told, well, we're only gonna listen to comments from people. If they're not on the agenda. So everyone waited their comment, then they found out that the area that they were waiting for their comments for was old business and that didn't have a comment period. So if we're gonna have other special comment periods other than the big one at the beginning, it should be on our agendas. People should know they're coming up and what's on it, going to be commented on or not. And lastly, I think it's last, let me just look here real quickly. Well. Lastly, is there any possibility to increase participation from citizens? Is are people amenable to pushing our meetings back a half hour? And starting meetings at five thirty, so people that work till five can actually come to meetings. And I know that puts a burden on. On the staff that attend, maybe we can shift their hours half an hour later for that day. So that they, you know, they're not just sitting around. You know, wasting time in between the workday and 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 the meeting, but. I know it's, it was always hard for me to get to meetings when I worked till five and they started five. It's less of an issue now that I tell it to you. And lastly, I'd like to, whatever we decide tonight, I'd like that, you know, very clearly to apply to all of our committees. And, you know, if if we're deciding a policy on public comments, it should hold across all of our committees. That's my comments.
Girlie.
So I I have some thoughts on this. I I think I agree with Mike that comment periods should be at the beginning. That people should be able to talk to the board about whatever, whether it's on the agenda or not. And that I would li, I would like to see it be consistent. Between the board and committees so that people know that if they're addressing something that the village board or the committees of the village board. Make decisions on that they as as residents of this community have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting. Whether it's the board or a committee to make comment. And I I think that just. Robert's rules and all of that other stuff get to be really confusing even when you do them a lot. And having a lot of different kinds of. Of. Protocols for different, different committees is can be very confusing and also very disenfranchising to people who have. Concerns or interest in what we're talking about.
I don't know, Martin, do you have any? Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I was hearing is is generally kind of in line with what I kind of laid out in my recommendation. The one thing, and I'd ask this of of Matt, and maybe he can talk about a little bit more. You know, other other boards and commissions have the power to control their agendas. So the ability to enforce a village right policy. On these different bodies that are part of the village, I may not necessarily. Be allowed, but I Matt, I know we kind of talked about it last week a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I'll weigh in. I I gave you kind of my best, kind of my best judgment on the issue without really digging deeply into it. And and I haven't really had a chance to dig deeply into it since we, since we discussed it, but my. My reaction is that the village board can establish rules of procedure, including rules relating to whether there'll be a public comment period and. And how that'll be handled for itself and and likely for standing committees. It seems to me that it gets more complicated if we're, if we're going to be talking about. Boards and commissions that have more independent statutory authority, so it gets more complicated. And and I think Martin notes this in his memo, if we're talking about. Commissions such as the Police Commission or the Plan Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals. I I don't, I can't tell you for certain because I I haven't really done the the homework necessary to render a legal opinion on this. But my my best judgment, you know, without having done the research is that. We may, we may find that it's difficult for the village board to dictate. Those kinds of things to those commissions that have some more independent authority. If it's something the board wants me to delve into and to provide a a legal opinion on, I can do that. I, as I said, I haven't really done the serious homework on that, but my. My instincts tell me that's going to be a more complicated question than than whether you can establish your own rules and for standing committees.
One, I had one suggestion that Mike brought up. I wondered with the community input. It it's it's sort of near the top, although tonight we had to sort of wait through the. The the audit report. I mean, is there any, any reason we couldn't like, we had roll call and then have the. Community input, just move it up a little bit and so that people can, people can, who want to speak. Right away, get to speak and don't have to wait. That seems like a simple kind of fix for that, just to have that right away. As much as we can.
Can I make a suggestion too?
Yeah.
Just because, you know, I I don't. I would hope that we wouldn't need to go to the extent of forcing any other committees to to. Go along with this. You know, maybe conversation with Martin and Randy and like Mr. Schnelly from planning and different, you know, whoever the the other. Committee chairs are. You know, to just have that discussion and say, look, we'd like to standardize. A a little bit, how how the public input happens in our meetings and would you be amenable to changing? The way you do things in your meetings to this instead, so that the public always knows what to expect if they go to any village board meeting or committee meeting. And that that would help things go a long way and. I can't imagine that they wouldn't be open to a discussion of how that would work.
Martin, should we try that?
And 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 we've we've gotten some feedback on the planning commission. And I know Lisa's been having some conversations with. Greg Schnelly on that and. I think they've kind of come up with some some new language to put on the agenda for public comments, so. To make it a little bit more clear on the expectation. So I think some of those conversations are happening based on some of the feedback that. We've received, so hopefully some of those things will be addressed.
And if anything isn't, you'll maybe let us know and we can always have Matt look into something if we need to then, right? Okay, let's hope we don't need to.
All right.
She's also one of the greatest legal minds of of our time right here, right, Matt?
You mean that one? Yeah, she's way smarter than I am.
I just, I thought maybe with this meeting going so long, it'd be nice that you can see your wife tonight.
Yeah, I I may not get to, I may not get to see her, otherwise I can see her picture tonight.
All right, should should we, Martin, you want to talk a little bit about? Eleven seed, the hybrid in person?
Before we move on, there was no comment about moving the meeting later.
You know, Mike, Mike, I would be happy if we could move him to four AM, to be honest. That would be my ideal time.
So I I I think a good time to, I'm not. I'm not sure, but I think the times are set by ordinance and I believe it's chapter one and two. Of the village code, and I know that's something that we talked about in the administrator goals and priorities is to. One, look at the committee structure, right, and how we're using that. But that may be intertwined with meeting times. And then also, I I know it's been a longstanding goal of Matt and Administrator Grace and Candy to rewrite chapters one and two. Because they're a little dated. So getting feedback on how we use our committee structures moving forward and meeting times and and all that sort of thing can kind of all feed into that conversation.
Also for them.
All right. All right, Martin, do you want to say anything else about the hybrid in person?
So the hybrid stuff and Matt may actually be the one that can talk about this a little bit more, but. So we were essentially operating under an emergency order and and guidelines to. Having these, having these meetings be remote. And now that those emergency orders are. Nonexistent or have gone into guidance, we're reverting back to our. The conduct of our deliberations at the village board level by village ordinance. And of course, that's done by Roberts Rules of Order. And there's a few things that we need to address before we actually go to. Hybrid meeting and Matt, maybe you can talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I I'm talking, I'm working with another number of communities on this very question and. What the issues are to 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 take into consideration if if you are interested in. Either virtual meetings or hybrid meetings on a more permanent basis moving forward. And and I certainly expect to be able to get you guys a memo with some with some more details on this, but I'll hit some of the highlights for you now. So. There are really two. Well, let me. Many communities now are considering, given the experience we've had with virtual meetings. Are considering whether to, on a more permanent basis, to allow for both members of the governing body and other committees. are considering whether to, on a more permanent basis, to allow for both members of the governing body and other committees and members of the public to have the option to appear at meetings virtually on a more permanent basis. And there are two legal issues that we have to address in that regard. One is the open meetings law. When the pandemic hit and we transitioned to virtual meetings on an emergency basis, there was some legal uncertainty about whether that was permissible. The Department of Justice issued guidance indicating that so long, that the the real issue is whether meetings are reasonably accessible to the public. And there was some concern that virtual meetings might put some members of the public at at a disadvantage in terms of accessibility. Given that they might have not have the technology, for example, necessary to, to attend meetings virtually. And so communities were encouraged to, you know, work on ways of addressing those issues. As we, as the year unfolded and as the Department of Justice and and others have have looked carefully at this question of accessibility, I think the conclusion that has been reached, and I agree with this, is that the opportunity to appear at meetings virtually. It has actually made meetings more accessible to the public than having only the option of appearing in person. And there may still be some accessibility concerns if you have only an a a virtual meeting option. But if if a community moves to this hybrid model, where either board members or committee members or the public may participate either in person or on a virtual basis, then at least there, there is, there appears to be a consensus that at least from an accessibility standpoint. That's probably the most accessible approach, you know, rather than going all hybrid or all in person. If you have both options available, at least from an accessibility standpoint, assuming you, you manage the technology appropriately, that that certainly solves the the accessibility problem. And 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 I think the Department of Justice is even now with the guidance they're issuing, encouraging communities to, to take advantage of the lessons that we've learned during the pandemic and to consider creating that kind of flexibility. So that's one issue. Then the, the second issue just has to do with what our own rules say about in-person meetings as opposed to virtual meetings. And as I understand it, in Oregon, our current ordinances and procedural rules do adopt Robert's rules of order. And Robert's rules of order currently, in the most recent edition of Robert's rules, the the twelfth edition, published recently and light and and to taking into account what we've all learned with pandemic. What it says is that meetings must be in person unless the organization has chosen in in its bylaws to allow for virtual participation. And Roberts doesn't say, Roberts recommends that if if virtual participation is going to be required, that the community adopt some rules to address some of the special issues that can come into play with virtual meetings. So I'll give you an example of some of the rules that we've been working on with guidance from Robert's rules and other sources that I think you'll need to consider. So the first threshold will be, do you want to allow for this kind of hybrid meeting structure or not? If you do want to allow members of the village board and other bodies to choose to attend or to attend virtually, do you want to make that so that it's, you know, their choice? Or do you want to set it up that they would need to go through some kind of approval process? Assuming it's allowable, then the rules should address what kind of internet meeting service will be used to make and to make sure that it has certain technological functions and functionality that will support visible displays that identify all the participants and that identify those who are seeking recognition to speak and that allow for people to see documents and other things that are under discussion. And these are things that I think you're all kind of familiar with. Now, we can see on the screen here a document on the screen and and it gives us all the opportunity to share it together. This recommendation that there be a clear login procedure and protocol established by rule. And that the clerk and that there be a clear login time that is established, a certain amount of time before the meeting begins to start. There's a need to describe how quorum will be established, not only at the beginning of the meeting, but during the course of the meeting. So if there's a question about whether a forum is present or not, there is a way to establish that. There, there may be, you may want to address issues about technical requirements and and whether individuals are going to be responsible on their own to make sure they have the kind of, you know, so for example, are individual board members going to be responsible on their own to make sure they have the kind of internet connection and other equipment available, or is that something the village is going to supply? Need to address whether the action the board takes is considered valid or not. In the event an individual board member loses their connection, what is that going to mean for the body's action? To address forced disconnections, you know, what power would the presiding officer have to disconnect someone? If there's, if their connection is creating interference with the meeting, whether that be to mute them or even disconnect them and whether that be a member of the body or a member of the public. Rules relating to how, what the protocol would be to seek recognition, you know, how is that going to be done? Who would, how is the chair going to manage that process? So those are examples, rules governing voting, how is voting going to happen? And so those are some of the rules that are examples of the rules that Robert's rules suggest considering and that we are, we have been working on drafting and sharing with our clients. And I, again, I expect to send to Martin soon a memo that summarizes all the material that I've just kind of reviewed with you, along with an example of the rules that we prepared and then are in the process of working on with other clients. So you can take a look at them yourself and decide what rules are appropriate for the village of Oregon. And so if you want to allow for virtual meetings on a more permanent basis, it's doable. It's legal, but there are a lot of technical issues that we didn't really, when we got into the pandemic, as you may remember, we just had to move very quickly to, on an emergency basis, move to electronic meetings. And we didn't, we didn't frankly have the time to delve into all these details that now people are looking at as we're considering doing this on a permanent basis. So I'll be sharing that a material with Martin and I'm sure he'll be sharing it with you all so that you can decide exactly how you want to proceed. I think it would be helpful for me at least to have some feedback from the board on, at least generally, what direction you want to go so that the materials I'm supplying to you are consistent with that general direction. So for example, if the village board said, we're not interested in hybrid meetings. No, we want to go back to doing things the way we did in-person meetings with, you know, that, that's what's required. Okay, well, then I I can stop work on this. But on the other hand, if the board says no, we want that option for ourselves, we want that option for the public. Then, then I need to make sure that I get you the materials you need so you can, so you can do that in a way that is both legal and practical and deals with the technical issues that need to be considered. So that's all I have.
Randy Carleen has a hand raised.
All right, yeah, Curly.
So I have a question. You named a lot of things there to consider and I took some notes, which, and I appreciate, you know, all the things that Roberts has to say as, and I wonder, it seems to me that some of these have probably come up in the course of the pandemic. And I I wonder if you could include ways that either we as a board or other boards that you work with have dealt with some of those questions. I'd, I'd just like to to know about that, like the quorum, for example, and things like that.
Yeah.
And then, so that's on what you just shared. I know for me personally, I'm going to be gone for the entire month of August. And I won't be able to participate in anything that happens unless I can do it virtually. I would like to participate. I'm of that time. I'm actually on vacation. And I'm not going to participate for that vacation time. But the rest of the time professionally, I'm going to be working virtually and I'd like to be able to participate in these meetings virtually as well. So I have a very selfish reason for that. But I agree also with what Matt said earlier, that participation has gone up. And, you know, everything I do professionally is virtual. And I can tell you that traveling around the state and trying to have a meeting and showing up and having four people be there is very disappointing when you drive all the way to Eau Claire. But when you get on to something virtual and you have 25 people show up, that's like gratifying. So I, I think it does offer that option for the public and and public participation is what we just talked about. So I would like to see us do something that's hybrid that allows for for those possibilities by more folks. And I have a very selfish reasons as well.
Would you, would you like me to respond to the question or just wait until we hear from others?
I, it, I, I don't, doesn't matter to me. I mean, that was kind of a, a thought I had. And so it's a request. I I suppose that there.
Well, let me respond just so I don't lose track of the question. So I think the question was, you know, what kind, how have community, have communities run into some of these technical issues during the pandemic? And how have they been addressed? I have to say, I feel very fortunate that the clients I work with, the boards have been really great during this pandemic in terms of working in a cooperative fashion, including when things get difficult from a technology standpoint. And so we, we haven't reached a point where we had to, where we had a problem and a conflict where we had to fall back on formal rules to solve it. When technical glitches have been arisen, people have been considerate and cooperative and found solutions on an ad hoc basis, just as we go. And, and so thank goodness, that's how it's gone. Unfortunately, you need rules to deal with problems that come up where, you know, you don't, if if you can't find a solution, you got the rules to fall back on. And so what I, what I would do, you know, so for example, with quorum call, you know, what I have found is that in in all the meetings I've been to, the governing body members who appear, they've been all very good about having their picture out. So you can see, oh, yeah, we can see everyone's here. But but then people ask the question like, well, what if somebody turns their picture off? How do we know they're there? How do we know they're paying attention? And, and so that hasn't been a problem. But and what if you, what if you take a vote and, you know, it's a seven-member body, but only five people respond? And then you're wondering, well, gee, where are the other two people? So I guess though, that's why we, we're, we're seeing that the formal, the formal guidance that we're getting is that it's a good idea to adopt some rules to address some of the technical issues that are unique to these virtual meetings. So that if something does come up, you have something you can turn to to say, how do we solve this problem? Or how do we answer this question? And I think when you see the rules, you'll see most of them make pretty good sense. I mean, so for example, you know, one of these rules requires that the clerk would include in the public notice of every meeting, not only the, the time and location of the physical meeting, but the codes that are necessary to connect to the meeting. Just make that, I don't, we don't have a rule right now that says you have to do that, but we've just been doing it. Why? Because it makes sense. But this rule also says, not only do you have to provide, you know, the information necessary to log in using the internet meeting service, but also provide an alternative and backup audio connection so that somebody can call in by phone if they don't have. So this, this is a rule that says, hey, we're going to allow this, but we've got to have both the internet meeting service and a phone option. And that has to be available to the public and it has to be included in our notice. It makes good sense. We've been doing it anyway, but now we've got a rule that says, this is how we're going to do it. This rule says, for example, the clerk shall turn that service on at least 15 minutes before the start of the meeting. I I don't frankly think we've been doing that. I don't know if we need to do that, but I guess you should talk about, should we have a protocol that says, you know, we're not going to wait until one minute before the meeting to turn it on? We're going to have it on, you know, five minutes before or what have you. So when you get the rules, you can look through them and and you can decide what makes sense and what doesn't. Here's another example. This rule says that to seek recognition, if you're attending virtually, you should use the raise hand function or the equivalent option rather than just, you know, interjecting by voice and asking to be recognized and to at least attempt that before you do that. So you'll have to look at that and say, well, do you feel that that's appropriate for your rules? Or do you think that's unnecessary? And you, you don't need to limit people to using that way of seeking recognition. So that's basically what, I think that's what I can say today about, you know, what the experience has been and why these rules might make sense at this point.
All right, Amanda.
Yeah, I, I just like, yeah, I think you're right, Matt, that a lot of these rules, you know, we've been figuring out as we go. I personally, I think we should try to do hybrid meetings and we can set up some time to look at these rules, you know, and discuss something official around it. But in the meantime, I don't see why we couldn't proceed as on an ad hoc basis. The only other question that I was thinking of as we're talking about all this is, you know, we're, we're like, oh, yeah, let's do it. But we've only done it one time. And that was with Jerry being virtual when we were doing the village administrator interviews. And it worked really well, but what if we have a lot more virtual participants? So I guess my question is for OCA Media, Paul, if you're listening, how, how doable is this? Can, you know, with the equipment we have, is that something that we can start right away? Or are you going to need time to troubleshoot? I don't know if he's listening.
Trying to figure this all out, Amanda, it's like.
Well, I think that's, that's the other component of this is the logistical part of it and the technology part of it. And we don't have a lot of experience running a, a meeting, both in person and online simultaneously. You know, who's, who's going to be responsible for overseeing that and keeping an eye on, you know, the virtual part of it? And we haven't really had those discussions internally about how that would all work. So that's another piece of the pie that we need to think about.
Yeah, I don't feel like we can.
Have your, your, your memo to us.
I'll have that memo out to Martin this week.
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't think we can even decide the rules until we know what's capable.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, more to come, I guess. All right, then move on. We're almost there. We're almost home. We're onto twelve, which is future agenda items. I need to give the board members opportunity to place items, new business on future agenda items for discussion. Anybody? Okay, not hearing any. Let's see, yeah.
I don't know if this is a future agenda item or just a hope that if there's any way that, that as we assemble packets for the board, if there's things that we know of earlier, if there's a way of somehow getting them to us. Because I got to tell you, having 274 pages dropped on me at three thirty in the afternoon on Friday and realizing 100 pages of that is dense, figures and finances, kind of reordered my weekend. And although I found it gripping, it would be nice to have more time to really sit and think.
Yeah, and something like, like that, Mike, I mean, I know the, the audit, I mean, I think I went through it like three times. You almost have to when it's that long, so.
So I don't know if that's possible for the staff or not, or it adds a lot of work.
We'll let Martin think about that. I'll say it.
Yep.
Okay, all right. We didn't quite hit four, four hours, but we're over three. Let's take, let's take an adjournment. Let's have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
All right, Mike, second.
Second.
Okay, Curly, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.